Okay. Welcome back, everyone. Our next item on the agenda is Item C3. And the subject for this is selection of Tri-W, the South Bay Boulevard, as a preferred site for planning and permitting for new WRF, and amendment to the agreement with Black &amp; Beach Corporation. And before we turn it over to Mr. Buckingham to open up, just want to say thanks to the community. We've had a lot of great input on this. We continue to get input. Staff has done great outreach. We've continued to receive quite a bit of response from folks over in the Bay Pines and Blue Heron area as well. I know Ms. Rudd did a lot of outreach there as well to prepare for this. Just want to give a shout out to the community and staff for the work coming up to this meeting. And with that, Mr. Buckingham?
Agreed.
Turn it over to you.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor, Council. So I'll just provide a brief one or two-minute sort of intro on what has brought us to this point over the last 90 days, and then turn it over to Mike Nunley to address the issues at hand. So you'll recall well that in early March, at the first council meeting in March, we assembled here. And really, at that point, the discussion was whether to express a site preference for the Rigetti site as the preferred site for the water reclamation facility, having discovered over the November-December time period that Rancho Colina no longer looked to be the best site. And so in early March, we met and were considering that question about whether Rigetti should be the preferred site. And based on a number of great inputs, the city council determined to, and thankfully determined, essentially push the pause button for 60 days and directed the staff to do two key things. One thing was to review the research work that we'd done for three years and to look and to identify if there were any new sites that had presented themselves, either in the Moro Valley, and to specifically consider a Tri-W site and the Chevron site. So that was one part of it, was sort of a relook at the decisions that had been made over the past year and a half to three years, and specifically assess if there are any new sites or emerging sites. And then, secondly, to do great community outreach, to ensure that the entire community was informed on the decisions. So we did that. And during that 60-day period, we actually identified sort of one and a half new sites, one fully new site that we referred to as the Madonna site, really across the street from Rancho Colina, that also appears to be, from many perspectives, a viable or a feasible site. And then we also reinvestigated the county portion of the Tri-W site. This is a site that had been looked at initially for a number of reasons. A number of years ago, it had fallen off the list in the cut from seven to four. And we reinvestigated that. It had primarily, we primarily had cost concerns with that site, so it, from one perspective, didn't meet the community goal of cost effectiveness. But as we relooked that and considered risk and time management and the cost of the time value of money, really, and construction costs over time, we determined, actually, that site might be quite viable. And so we came to you and, and then the WRFCAC, the Water Reclamation Facility Citizens Advisory Committee, we brought all of that information to them. I'm sorry, I failed to mention the outreach that was done. So during that 60-day period, we also held two well-attended and interactive workshops here in Vets Hall, or one was at the community center, to consider and to get input from the community and to provide information, answer questions. And we sort of took that show on the road to two farmers' markets during April, I think it was, at both Spencer's and the downtown farmer's market, to get information out to the community and listen to the community. We took all of that to the WRFCAC meeting in late April, and the WRFCAC considered it all. And the WRFCAC actually made a recommendation at that point that the city choose the Tri-W site, the county portion of the Tri-W site, or recommended to the council that the Tri-W portion of the, excuse me, the county portion of the Tri-W site be the preferred site. And so with that, we came to the council in early May, four weeks ago tonight, and presented that to you, the results of everything I just discussed. And your determination at that point was essentially, hey, that all sounds really good, but I want you to take 30 days and go do two things. One is to do great outreach to the neighbors around the Tri-W site, Casa de Flores, Blue Heron, the other neighbors, both in the agricultural side and on the more residential side, and to find a way to inform the entire community of what may be a change in site location and the potential financial impacts of choosing a site that could be more expensive over time than Rigetti or one of the Moro Valley sites. So we did that, the outreach. Mike's going to cover a little bit, the outreach to neighbors. It has been extensive. Debbie Rudd from RRM has been our lead on that, has done a great job. We've had outreach events at Casa de Flores and at the Blue Heron. Debbie is walking those neighborhoods as recently as a couple of days ago. We've reached out to all of the neighbors in the area, including the agricultural neighbors. And generally, the results of that outreach have been quite positive. And then we also sent a flyer out to the entire community, to every door direct. It was delivered by the postal service to every mailbox in Moro Bay, including all post office boxes. And that flyer was quite well received. It sort of boiled the issue down. It identified to the community what the top four sites we were considering were, some of the pros and cons of each of those, and was very clear that the Tri-W site, which appeared to be the leading site at that point, at this point, has a moderate, is moderately more expensive than perhaps some of the other sites, but there are also a long list of pros versus cons for that site. So you said, go do that for 60 days, and we've done that. And that's what we're here tonight to do, is to present to you the results of the last 30 days of that outreach, and then to make a recommendation to you. Mike?
So, Mike? Mr. Buckingham? Sorry. I'm Mike Nunley, the program manager for the water reclamation facility. I'd like to walk through, first, we always want to come back to the community goals. These were the goals established by the community in workshops a couple of years ago. We've carried them through. In the process, some have become more refined, or we've learned more about the importance of them to the community, but these were the initial kind of guiding principles that the community put forward and that council adopted. So first is to produce tertiary disinfected wastewater, at a minimum, I would add to that. Produce reclaimed wastewater, cost-effectively. Allow for onsite composting. Some of the meetings we've had in the past, we've clarified that taking part in regional composting operations with businesses that come, take the sludge from us and process it, and can do that more cost-effectively than we can, is a good trade-off. So I would say that's one that's kind of been refined over, through meetings with the Citizens Advisory Committee and Council. Designing for energy recovery, also the importance of just energy efficiency, designing to treat for contaminants of emerging concern, allowing for other municipal uses. This is one that we've discussed quite a bit. Ensuring compatibility with neighboring land uses, and then the goal of being operational within five years. Recognizing that every month of delay on a roughly $100 million program, if you look at the different phases of work, equates to, you know, $150,000 worth of cost escalation every month. And it's significant. And, let's see. So, first, I'd like to walk through the public outreach. And Debbie Rudd with RRM has been the lead on public outreach, and she's here to respond to specific questions. She talked to a lot of folks in the community, interacted with a lot of different regulatory agencies, and I think did a great job of reaching out to folks. So first, we issued a project update postcard in early May. Dave talked a little about the purpose of that. It was to lay out that the Tri-W site is the recommended site from staff, what the pros and cons are, and invite folks to take part in the public process. Come to the meetings, send emails, et cetera. We had individual stakeholder meetings with property owners adjacent to the South Bay Boulevard site. And we had a meeting with the Blue Heron Terrace Mobile Home Owners Association on May the 4th. On June the 9th, we had a, we gave a presentation to Casa de Flores and the Bayside Care Center. It had a lot of attendance at that, from the residents and from family members and employees, a lot of good questions, a lot of good discussion. Flyers were delivered hand-to-hand, by hand, to Bay Pines Mobile Home Park, the RV Park. And then we reached out to several different agencies, Coastal San Luis Resource Conservation District, Fish and Wildlife, the National Estuary Program, and also the County Parks Department, as well as the golf course. Because we're relatively close to the golf course, they could be a potential customer for recycled water, or there could be some exchange there possibly. So we wanted to speak with them as well. So this is interesting. I mean, the folks who are going to email and reach out are folks who feel passionately one way or the other. But I thought it was interesting, the number of emails I've received, you know, there's well over 30 emails since we issued the May 2016 project update postcard. I know council's received some that I haven't received, and received some correspondence I didn't, but I can speak to what I saw directly. A few were requests for additional information, didn't really express a site preference, just interested in the process. You know, 29 of them were in support of the Tri-W site, and many stated they preferred it even if the costs were higher. One was for support of the existing wastewater plant location. One was in support of the lowest-cost project, no site preference specified. Two were in support of the Rigetti product, location. Two were opposed to what we call the city Tri-W site, and that's the part of, the Tri-W parcel that's at the end of Moro Bay Boulevard, or on the northeast side of the highway. And then three were opposed to the county Tri-W site. And then many, many of those, in general, expressed concern over project delays and also expressed the importance of urgency. So some things we specifically heard with regard to the South Bay, what we're now calling the South Bay Boulevard site, to try to be more specific with the location. First is traffic was a concern of some of the neighbors. We recognize we'll need to analyze that in the environmental impact report. Odor was expressed as something folks were concerned about. So the importance of containing and treating onsite, we've known that anywhere we might go. Trespassing or impact to the neighboring ranches, controlling or limiting access. I know several council members and I also spent some time with Mr. Mano and Mr. Thorson, and talked to them about their concerns and issues, and I know they're here tonight. And then timing. And really, folks want to move quickly to minimize cost escalations and get the project So, in terms of an update of our site options work that's been done over the last few months, we recommend the South Bay Boulevard, what we formerly were calling the Tri-W site. The reason is, it has the greatest certainty, in our opinion, of moving forward on a five-year schedule. We recognize that the neighboring landowners and ranchers have expressed some concerns with public access, if that became part of the project, the potential impact to their operation, particularly to calving operations, and also just the general loss of agricultural land. And that's something that all of the different sites we've looked at, we recognize there'd be an impact to agricultural land. Because we need 10 to 15 acres if we try to meet several different goals of the site, and the only parcels that could accommodate that, that we found, are the best candidates. We're all in agricultural areas. So we do respect that that's going to be something we're going to face at any of the locations. But the majority of the other neighboring residents did not express opposition. And that's in the meetings we had, in email correspondence. Generally, the, we did not see opposition, other than, and you know, I know we've got on record a letter from Mr. Mano and an email from Mr. Thorson, and folks have talked to them. And I know that they are very concerned about it, and I don't want to minimize that. The Tri-W site was one that we discussed at the WRFCAC meeting last week. And that, within the city, was generally considered in prior reports. But there are a couple of areas that are somewhat hidden behind two knolls. But the challenge, and I'll show a map in a second to show where I'm talking about, but the challenge with that site, with those, that location generally, is first, opposition from the adjacent city neighborhood. We would expect a similar of opposition from those homeowners, and we've seen it. We've already seen emails expressing concern, and, you know, similar concerns with neighborhood compatibility. Also, there's less screened area there. It's less well-hidden than the areas on South Bay Boulevard that we've been looking at. So, in the, the site options, that's, if you recall, at our May 10 meeting, the WRFCAC, another point we want to talk about is the concept of removing projects from, or removing sites from consideration. And I wanted to talk about that now, early in the presentation. As you recall, the Citizens Advisory Committee had recommended eliminating the Rigetti site from future, from consideration in an environmental impact report, or from any future discussion. We, at that time, at the May 10 meeting, recommended and still recommend not eliminating any sites for these reasons. One primary reason is recommendation, of course, from the city attorney, with whom we discussed whether we should be taking any sites, quote, "off the table." And, you know, really, the primary purpose of the council at this time and for this meeting is to choose a site for study in the facility master plan and the environmental impact report, and to develop a project description for CEQA compliance, and not to eliminate sites. So that's really what we've recommended council take action on today. CEQA requires examining project alternatives, whether they be alternative sites, technologies, et cetera. And the environmental impact report scoping, notice of preparation, those upfront processes are the appropriate time to identify the project alternatives, whatever they might be, that can meet the project objectives for the study in the environmental impact report. It's important to have, also, to have alternative sites if issues happen to arise at a preferred site, since we're very early in the, even though it doesn't feel like it, we're very early in the planning and permitting process, even though we've done quite a bit of groundwork. So council did not eliminate any sites at that May 10 meeting, per staff recommendation. One thing I would like to do is talk briefly about the difference Tri-W sites. So the two sites that we recommend the city consider are the ones that are the, have the heavy black line around them. Flat area for the one that's immediately behind the knoll, that's behind Casa de Flores, is a little over 10 acres. The area across a drainage channel that's actually a little, it's more visible than the front property. There's around 15 acres of flat area, plus or minus. We don't, we, again, it's more visible. The sites that we had discussed and that Mr. Thorson and Mr. Mano had brought up and we looked at, one is, if you look at Moro Bay Boulevard, they are right over the other side of two small knolls. And I've got one here with the shaky red dot, and another one here with the shaky red dot. Two knolls, small properties or parcels behind them, flat areas, there are drainage swales, coastal streams, there is a power easement for a large transmission facility, and that constrains, let's see, the one site on the east side to about an acre. And it can, the other one, we have about, let's see, leave about 13 acres or so of flat area, but the challenge is, it's, a lot of it's visible from the highway. And so, and if you see, you have a similar proximity to the houses in this neighborhood that we saw at the, at the Rigetti site. So that's why our recommendation is still this area in general, because it can be visually screened easily. We are not as far from residents, and we, and so we, but I did want to, I did want to present what we know about the other sites for city consideration. So in terms of the project schedule, if council agrees to move forward today with the recommendation to go with the South Bay Boulevard site for master planning and permitting, and to approve the scope amendment with Black &amp; Beach, that we'll talk about in amendment in a minute, then the facility master plan anticipated completion would be December 2016. Master reclamation plan would be wrapped up March 2017. Environmental impact report draft will be ready June 2017. And then the WRF construction, the date would be June 2021, based on the five-year goal. So the next steps that we see in the process, and we get that this is a major decision for council today, and I don't want to minimize that, but I do want to walk through what the next steps would be if council agrees with staff recommendation. First is the city council today would identify their preferred site for planning and permitting. Second would be review, you know, today we're talking about reviewing and approving the scope amendment for the facility master plan. We'll talk about that briefly in a minute. Continue our outreach and meetings with the neighbors, because we do want to coordinate and work closely with the ranch owners, all the neighbors around there, and come up with a project that's as compatible as we can, as we can make it. Continue development of a draft MOU. We have started sending some information and negotiating with the South Bay Boulevard owner. Complete the topographic survey for the area, for that property. Finalize the salinity control plan to address, and that's a step to address the contributions of salt to our collection system, and find low-cost ways to bring down the operating cost of purifying our water on the back end, which is very important for project economics. Initiate the master reclamation plan, perform the, and perform the EIR scoping, and then continue the environmental studies. So those would be the, you know, the immediate steps that would come if we move forward today. And I have some information in our staff report about the facility master plan, that the facility master plan scope amendment requested by Black &amp; Beach. Some things I'll point out, the WRFCAC, we did, we did not have the master plan amendment in time to present to the full WRFCAC, but we did review it with the engineering subcommittee. And the engineering subcommittee members reviewed, and they recommended, all three recommended approval. The additional work is to evaluate the South Bay Boulevard site, including new pipeline alignments. Also, some revisions to some of the previous memorandum and engineering analysis for the onsite support facilities. If you recall, that's where we analyzed solar and corp yard and other facilities. The off-site support facilities, these were both focused on the Rancho Colina site when they were put together, and also the internal draft of the potable reuse memorandum, which also was focused around the Rancho Colina site. Those were done very early in the process. And then, Black &amp; Beach had also provided support, engineering support to us to evaluate the Rigetti site and also the Madonna site during, as we were working through the site option study. And so that really is the purpose of the budget amendment request. And the total amount that they're requesting, it's about a 16% increase to the initial project budget. And includes some additional meetings to, now that we're reinitiating the process, as well as the items I just mentioned. It's a $116,000 budget amendment on their original $710,000 budget. And we felt it was appropriate, we negotiated with them and worked closely with them to develop the scope and budget, and we recommend approval. So at this point, I will turn it over for questions and discussion.
Okay, great. Thanks for that presentation. It'll be an opportunity for council to go through questions. We have about an hour's worth of public comment based on the speaker slips that I have, so council can go through our questions. We'll open it up for public comment. I'll just go through the speaker slips, and then prior, after public comment, we'll go through deliberation and discussion on the Tri-W site. And with that, I'll open up questions. Mr. Smuckler, you want to start us off?
Sure. A couple of short questions. One is, want to get a bit more detail about how progress is going with the property owners on MOU and draft discussions, on how that could be composed, and whether, as we've talked, there is the opportunity to purchase only what is needed on the site rather than the entire property.
And discussions with the property owner's representative have indicated that that's what they would prefer, is selling part of the property. And the discussions we've had, we're in a unique position, because if you recall, the Tri-W site at Los Osos, it's the same owners or some entities related to those same owners. And so they went through a negotiation process similar for the purchase of that property by the Los Osos CSD. So they're very familiar with the issues of negotiating property for wastewater facilities. So we had submitted a draft MOU to them. They have a different form they'd like to sit in, so we're waiting on that to come back. But we're actively engaged with them on it.
I'll just add that, so Mike, Rob, and I have met with the representative of the owners. They are quite positive about the project. They, they, they see the need for the project and essentially say, we want to help you get this done. They're certainly willing to, in fact, their preference is to, is to enter an MOU for the sale of only the property that's required for the WRF project, not a giant swath of property.
Okay. And I had the benefit of touring out there with yourself and a couple of the neighboring ranchers, and got to get some insight from you on the two options within that zone. And the, just wanted to hear your comments publicly about whether we would require both of those, or one would suffice. And you did say a little bit in your presentation that the closest one that's hidden behind the knoll, it would be likely enough space to be useful for everything that we're talking about. And the other property that is more visible and on the other side of the creek would not likely be necessary, but I did want to hear you confirm that here.
Sure. That's, I'll run, I'll run back to that map. So the parcel towards the front, and we've done some large, some large blobs here. So the parcel towards the front, and we've done some large, some large blobs here, but we say 10 acres plus or minus in the front. If you looked at, say, solar panels or other facilities that don't require perfectly flat land, you might be able to go a little bit outside of that. So that's why, in our opinion, it looks like it'd be adequate space for, say, the water reclamation facility, possibly corp yard, possibly solar facility. The property in the back, from our perspective, a couple of challenges are, it's not, it's not a huge deal, it can be mitigated, but you're crossing coastal stream, it's more visible, and it's, it's not as well-hidden, it's not as well-tucked away. And we know in discussions with the property owner too, that, you know, that, that there's a general preference that we stay closer to that knoll.
Okay. Thank you. And just looking at the amendments and the scope of work, and tasks 101 and then 301, some of those are related to the onsite support facilities, you know, the list of, of items that could be cited there, and then 101s about the public outreach side. Can you talk a little bit about when we can expect to be able to check in with the community, some of the other stakeholders and neighbors, and actually start to talk more about the details of what of these elements really are necessary, revisit the goals, update those as necessary, and, and get more specific about some of these items that in some cases are causing concern for the neighbors, and others might be, as we've talked about with the regional composting operation, likely needed to be removed because they're burdening the project and kind of running against, you know, the overall progress and main priority for the project. So if you could talk about how we could have those, are those, is that implicit in this as amended?
Yeah, that's correct. So the, the plan was that we would get to a point with, originally with the Ranch of Colina site, we signed the contract, that we would have more of that robust discussion with the public. And the, we were shooting for completion within six months. So, you know, the workshops and coordination with the public and with the property owners, I mean, they would, we would, we would be starting to schedule those within the next month, looking out probably a couple of months. So those, those would start real, I would say fairly early in the process. We'd want to work closely with staff and with the citizens advisory committee to schedule those. We'd also want to spend some time talking to the property owners and the other entities that are, that are engaged, the National Estuary Program, I know they've got a representative here tonight, there are a number of other agencies that we, we want to talk to as we kind of kick this process back off.
Those are my questions.
Thanks, Noah. John?
Thank you, Mr. Nunley, for the overview, and Mr. Buckingham, also for the introduction. Appreciate that. Appreciate the work that you have done and the detail of the recommended cost increases. I'm referring to a copy of the email that I received from Mr. Thorson, and if I missed it, maybe you could reiterate for me, so the concerns that have been raised in the letter or the email, and one issue of, of major concern would be the interference with beef cattle operations, which could be devastating, in the words of the individual. If indeed we had some of the auxiliary types of activities and/or pieces of what we originally had designed as our goals included in this, like public trails, possibly a park, those kinds of things, could you just briefly address your discussion with that specific issue?
Sure. And, you know, I know that, that those gentlemen are here today, and, you know, I know they'll get up and express what their concerns are. I mean, I would, I would say, number one is they're, they're not excited about it at all, number one. Number two is, because they are concerned it's going to disturb their operation, they, you know, Mr. Mano's put a lot of effort into having a conservation easement on his property, and, and he's done some really innovative approaches for moving water around his property, and the way he schedules the cattle to graze, and has, has done a lot of work on that. And the, but, you know, the biggest concerns are, the bigger footprint we take up, the less kind of of the ideal grazing area he currently leases or has an agreement to, to have his cattle on that Tri-W property. And, and it's one of the preferred areas for his, for his herd. And he's concerned that, you know, one major concern is trespassers, is folks, you know, or folks at a community park, if it were located there, getting into his property and disturbing his cattle, and disturbing his operation. That was one major concern. Another one was, you know, any more traffic than you really need to absolutely have back there was a second concern. So, you know, in the emails I've seen, it was, it was stated that their preference would be go somewhere else, number one, but if you had to go there, that really anything beyond a water reclamation facility, just a water reclamation facility would be a concern. You know, in some of the discussions we've had, I mean, the, the concept of co-locating the corporation yard and the water reclamation facility, the corporation yard is not a facility that adds a lot of footprint or a lot of traffic. It's basically the office space for the city public works staff, but we understand that, you know, any additional, is, is any additional traffic or additional folks there would be a concern to them.
If I could just, sorry, if I, if I could just expand on that, so the, the city's goals for the project don't include any parks, trails, or any of, anything like that? I'm not really sure how that has entered the conversation much, except that in some of the other sites, for example, the Rigetti site, when there was discussion of how to protect the upper side of the, of the Rigetti site, we discussed a conservation easement, perhaps some sort of access that was a conservation access. But the context of that was in the discussion of how to protect the upper 240 acres of Rigetti that weren't needed for the 10-acre water reclamation facility. All of our discussion and the goals for the project center around a water reclamation facility, and perhaps two other uses, a corporation yard, which Mike has talked about, and then some energy generation facility, likely a solar, solar farm. And so, so there is, for the Tri-W site, there's no consideration for any public-serving amenities there, for example, parks or trails, that's not on the table at all. And in fact, as I just described, we, we will be able to purchase only the precise amount of property that we need for the critical piece of infrastructure, the water reclamation facility, and won't purchase property for other activities that, that would be public, that would have a, a greater draw to the public, and perhaps the, the concern about trespassing, which is a serious and legitimate concern, were there parks and trails there think is significantly mitigated.
Great. Thank you for that. I was responding to the email, and that specific item was brought up, and I wanted to bring that out specifically and draw it out, so thank you. I may not get the name right, but in the same email, they asked to research the possible location on the top of Morro Bay Boulevard, the old Damagini Dairy. Could you comment on that?
Yes, and, and that area is, is the area that I...
The shaky red...
Generally here, the shaky red dot.
Yeah.
It'd be a lot more still if it was closer, I promise.
I'm sorry, could you do it again? I wasn't looking.
I'll do it again, all right.
Yeah, couldn't see, okay.
Generally this area. And there were two areas that, that we had, we had discussed and looked at. One is on the west side of the drainage, that blue line, and one on the east side.
As Mike noted during the presentation, that the staff does not recommend those sites, and is concerned about that, or that site really, because of its proximity to other neighborhoods. So while it's further away from some of the cattle operations over toward, toward the right-hand side of the picture there, there's, there will clearly be significant concern from other Morro Bay neighborhoods, should we look at that site. There's also some elevation concerns, it's much higher, and so there's, there's likely some long-term cost issues there and some engineering issues there. So while there was some discussion at the WRF CAC of what about other Tri-W sites that the staff is recommending the, the Morro Bay Boulevard, I'm sorry, the South Bay Boulevard site and not the, the one described.
Correct. Thank you. Thank you for clarifying that. How close is the area that you are recommending to the Harbor View tract?
The area that we are recommending is, so we're here, I believe Harbor Terrace Tract is here.
Okay. And it just, what's the distance?
It's probably roughly almost a half a mile.
Half a mile?
Somewhere in that neighborhood.
Okay.
A little further.
Because it's a quarter mile.
It looks like it's a little, yeah, a little more than that, but...
Okay, gotcha.
From the... So the closest residential area in terms of higher density to your proposed site is, once again, where?
Well, we have, on the south side of Highway 1, those are really the closest residents. And those are bay pines and blue heron. They're six tenths of a mile away, half a mile, somewhere in that neighborhood.
Okay.
They're the closest, but, you know, there is the buffer of the highway there.
All right. All questions I have for right now. Thank you, Mike, appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Buckingham.
Matt?
Thanks, John.
Yes.
Yeah, Mike, I, if you could speak to the email I sent you earlier today, talking about possible drainage issues from the, the county Tri-W site into the Choro Valley, and this is, those were specifically kind of outlined with the National Estuary Program.
Sure, yeah. And so I'd like to speak to that. Councilman McElwetsky had sent me an email with some concerns about the potential for drainage or overflows at this location, possibly getting into Choro Creek and into the estuary. A couple of things I would point out is wastewater treatment facilities are designed, so if there are minor spills, that those are contained onsite, and they're treated onsite. So the, that's one area of protection there. There's no offsite drainage from modern wastewater treatment facilities. Site drainage is contained and it's treated. The other is, the, the risk is very low that you would see a large spill that would make its way all the way down to Choro Creek for a number of reasons. One is the requirement to have redundant equipment in wastewater treatment facilities. The, the fact that you'd have redundant pumps, so that if one failed, another one automatically turns on, the requirement for standby power in the event the power goes out. These facilities are, are designed to have very few spills and overflows. They do occur, and that's where the importance of the grading and the ability to contain as much of that water as you can onsite is critical. It's something we would take very seriously, because it is, as you mentioned, a concern that we know National Estuary Program would have, and that could be accomplished with, with some site grading to make sure that we don't, we really reduce the risk that we would have a spill go offsite. The most overflows and spills occur in collection systems, not in treatment facilities, because that's where you have the most potential for a line to get clogged, or, or damage to a pipe, or something of that nature.
Okay. And also another question along the same thing, and I know it's been expressed by the, the ranchers in the area, and especially with the National Estuary Program, is the conservation easement in between these two properties, and what are the possible conflicts with that, and/or how can they be mitigated?
So we, we are looking into the conservation easement. Our understanding is there's a conservation easement on Mr. Mano's property, and that there also may be a conservation easement on the property that he jointly owns, or easement he jointly owns with the city, that's between the Tri-W property and, and the highway. So we're, a lot of that would depend on where we locate that access. If we shift it over a little from where it's currently located, we might be able to avoid some of that, but we're working on researching that now.
Also, and I think you mentioned it in your talk about this, in terms of traffic concerns with South Bay Boulevard, because that already is a problematic area at certain times of the day, and given the workload that we're going to have with, we could have with city vehicles, some of the, maybe you don't have to necessarily go so deep into it, but just express some of the larger general ideas?
Sure. So a couple of comments that we heard from neighbors were the traffic going to the middle school from Quintana Road at that intersection on the south side of Highway 1. That was something expressed by the residents at Blue Heron, that they had questions about, and they hoped that, you know, maybe some of this might fix some of that. We, the, part of the environmental impact report, and part of the facility, and is to, is to look at traffic impacts, study those, and mitigate those, both during construction and after. So I can tell you, we don't have the answers right now, but it'll be a significant focus for us. One advantage that we'll have is that South Bay Boulevard intersection, when traffic is coming for construction, the folks that are coming from San Luis Obispo, they'll likely be able, construction traffic coming from San Luis Obispo will likely be able just to zip right off at the off-ramp and go straight up the access to the Tri-W site. So, but the other traffic directions are all things that we need to, we need to really look at and pay close attention to.
Thanks, Matt. Christine?
All right, a few quick questions before we go to public comment. Thanks. So I just want to throw it out, it's sort of a question, and I guess sort of getting to something Mr. Smuckler said. So at some point, are we able to go in and adjust the city, the project goals, and put asterisks near things that are no longer standing city goals?
You could do that anytime, and this is something I've thought about quite a bit over the last, over the last year. The, the city goals, to me, still are the guiding principles, but they, the, the reality check is what sites you have, what you can do with it, and, and kind of the practicality. And I think through this process, we'll see some of those goals council and the public will reprioritize. These goals are more important than others. So I, I see that, I see that definitely happening. It doesn't mean that the goal-setting process was, was wrong. It's the natural development of a major, a major regional infrastructure project. I mean, it's a hundred million, $100 million program in that neighborhood. And, and there are going to be trade-offs, and all the goals might, might change a little along the way, but I think it's important to keep those goals so that you can make those decisions consciously. This one's less important than this one. And I think that process will naturally happen during the facility master planning process and the sequel process, and the public engagement.
Okay. And I think maybe we could consider just an asterisk, you know, to exam, on, for example, onsite composting, because that's clearly something that keeps coming up. An asterisk says we're continuing to look at it, something like this, because I think it continues to be there, and it looks like that's where we're headed. And if it's truly not, based on public conversations we've had, then I think that would be great to reflect it there. And, you know, I recall discussion about the, the Tri-W property and the city portion, the county portion, which are all controlled by the same owner, I believe, that there was somewhat of an unwillingness on the part of the owner to focus too much effort on this, not really necessarily interested in sharing with us the city, in the city limits portion, but more interested in working with us on the county portion. Can you, if I'm correct on that, or clarify me if I'm not?
I, I can say that they're, they're generally more open to the county parcel, but, you know, there's, there hasn't been a discussion with them where they have said, we won't do this or won't do that. And property negotiation between agencies and private owners is kind of different than, than property negotiation between two private entities. You know, the city is bound to pay an appraised price, so there's no real price negotiation or cost negotiation. The appraisal governs what you're going to pay. You know, a city can have some overriding considerations if they feel like a... You know, a city can have some overriding considerations if they feel like a parcel's the right parcel, and so there, you know, it's a different, I would just say it's a different process than two private entities negotiating.
Right.
If I could, one other note about the city TRW site is that that piece of property, actually, there was a voter referendum on that piece of property about 20 years ago, 25 years ago, and we would have to figure out how to undo that or what the process was, so that's another piece of what could be significant friction for that, for that site, which does not exist with the county TRW site.
I believe that's the, the part of that parcel is the part that's outlined in the red.
The entire 177 acres that's within the city limits is governed by that referendum, and that could be a significant friction.
Okay, great, I'm glad you pointed that out. And then, my last question before I turn it over to the mayor and then to the public, how willing is the city to revisit all functions of the corp yard moving forward? And if we're willing to do that, when will we be doing that? And will we have full engagement in that process moving forward, before we plan something for, you know, perhaps vehicles that don't need to be there, or are only there because there's, no one's ever thought about where else they should go? And the example I'm using is when we used to have the gas station at the corp yard, and now we no longer have the gas station there, which, you know, Mr. Buckingham led the removal of the gas station, so, you know, people don't come in and out of there for gas, they simply go to a local gas station. So we've stopped that use just by having a fresh set of eyes look at the functionality of our current corp yard. How willing is, how willing are we as a city to commit to that reevaluation? And then if we are, then when will that happen in this process, before we end up going to Black and Beach and getting into something that perhaps then we'll have to spend more money to redesign in a year or so?
Sure, so, that, we would see that process proceeding concurrently with the facility master plan. It would start with our meetings with staff, and then we'd feed that information into the facility master plan. The things that, I guess, a couple of things I would emphasize, and Rob can speak to this better than I can, but the city did a needs assessment, I believe it was 2008, and they determined eight years ago that it was in pretty bad shape, needed to be replaced and upgraded, and it's not in better shape now, is a facility that needs to be replaced. There are opportunities to save cost for the facility by sharing it with water reclamation facility, you know, an example that I've used a lot is like shared lockers or shared operation space, and so there are opportunities to save money overall by co-locating them. It's two facilities that make a lot of sense together. I believe City of Paso Robles did that recently with their wastewater plant upgrade, and it does help with some efficiency. So I would say that we want to take that seriously and look at that, and that's an exercise that we'll be going through with staff, if we can agree upon a site where we can start playing around with those boxes.
I would note that the priority here is to get the wastewater reclamation, or the water reclamation facility rolling. That is the priority. That's what's costing the city money, and that's what we want to get done for you in the next five years. And the other things we should have a conversation about, we should not hold the WRF hostage to the lesser goals. There are still guiding principles, we can revisit those, whether it's solar, whether it's a corp yard, whatever it is. We should have a conversation about those, understand the, first, understand what they are. We say solar farm, is that a, is that a 50-acre solar farm, or is that a 5-acre solar farm, or a half-acre solar farm? We need to communicate with the community, what that, what is it? Same thing with the corp yard, and the corp yard is, it sounds like a big industrial thing. The corp yard right now is essentially one building on a quarter acre or less with 12 maintenance guys who park their car there in the morning, and then get in their trucks and go, their pickup trucks, and go do work around the city. And so we, I don't want to minimize that, but I think we can have a good conversation about that, and make a decision as a community on the pros and cons, and then go from there. But we're, from the city's perspective, we should have that conversation, we should have that conversation, but we should also have a decision, hopefully, on getting the WRF moving, and then let's, let's, let's talk separately about solar and corp yards and those things.
Okay, great, no more questions, thanks.
Thank you, thanks for that. I just wanted to do my ex parte with Mr. Mano and Mr. Thorson last Friday, and doing a little field trip out at the ranch site, so I just wanted to put that out there, and thank you guys for hosting me and educating me a little bit about your facility and ranching. So, some of the discussions we've had about visibility, so is it a fair assessment to say that we have heightened our sensitivity to visibility since our discussion in moving, you know, site location from Rancho Calina to Righetti? Would that be fair to say we've kind of heightened that sensitivity to the visibility?
I would say that's probably true. I'd say we are, the, it's this, I think the term is the neighborhood compatibility, and that to me encompasses visual, just the proximity to the facility.
Proximity.
Is almost more of a, is more of a, as much of a real concern to folks as odor, noise, et cetera, and so I would group those together.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, I'm not sure I would say that we've heightened our concern about visibility, we have been concerned about visibility from the get-go. And in fact, the reason that, one of the reasons that we moved away from Rancho Calina was because of visibility. It didn't, the new Rancho Calina site was going to impact, we were sensitive to visibility, and the new Rancho Calina site was going to be more visible, harder to mask, and so that was one of the two main reasons for moving away from that site. And so, we've been concerned about visibility from the beginning, and the discussions from Rancho Calina to Righetti to TRW or wherever have been all around neighborhood compatibility, and from a visibility perspective, designing architecturally a site that fit in with the surroundings, whether it looks like a barn, or it looks like a ranch, or looks like, whatever it needs to look like to fit in with its surroundings. So, that neighborhood compatibility goal, visibility is part of that, and we have been and remain very concerned about that.
Okay, so, some of the comments about the site and the proximity to the ranch, and maybe Mr. Mano and Mr. Thorson can respond during public comment on that too, because, you know, I understand the sensitivity, I didn't have this discussion when we were out there, but the ability to screen that facility, not just architecturally, you know, have the setting fit in, but due to the proximity to the ranch, so I imagine doing the, during the facilities master plan, you know, whether it's a grove of trees in there, and to be able to isolate and insulate the ranching next door, and whether or not that's, you know, effective or not, I'm just, you know, I guess that's a question and a discussion point that we might be able to have some information from, for our two neighbors. And then, the other sites that are the city TRW sites, so would those be included in the alternatives analysis for the EIR?
We would, we would not recommend making a decision on inclusion or exclusion from the EIR at this point. I would say for a preferred site for the master planning, and the preferred site for the project description for the EIR, we'd like to select, we recommend the county TRW parcels. But I would say that if during the EIR scoping process, if that arose as an alternative that should be analyzed, then we would want to analyze it as an alternative.
Okay, so no different than any other past or site that's been within the evaluation and the process of coming to this TRW site, they're all kind of on the table for evaluation and analysis in the Sequa and the EIR?
I would say, I would say yes.
Okay. And then, I know you were talking about outreach and neighbors and whatnot, looking at the map, there's, we looked at the Blue Heron area, the Bay Pines area, and then there's the neighborhood area just above the Quintana, Black Mountain type of area. Have we done much outreach there yet? Are we going to, are we going to focus some outreach in that area as well? I know it's fairly good distance away, but I'm just kind of curious on what kind of outreach we're planning on in that area.
You know, I'll ask Debbie to kind of speak to any specifics to that, to outreach specifically to that neighborhood.
All right, thank you.
Good evening, Council, Debbie Rudd with RM Design Group. Are you talking about the area, I'm not, I'm not clear which area you're talking about.
So, right there, left right there, that neighborhood right there.
We haven't done specific outreach except for the postcard, and I did real, I did notice that as people sign up on the city website, we get notification of where they live, if they, if they give us that information, and there are people in that neighborhood who have signed up and are staying in the loop, but we haven't done a community meeting with that group.
So, I guess we'll, I know we've done some focus outreach in those specific areas, the areas that are in closer proximity, and so I'm imagining we're going to spread that outreach as we move along on this, specifically in that neighborhood. Looks like it's kind of the next closest neighborhood to me in that area?
We can either do more focus outreach and try to do that, or just do some more, like we did before, the four community wide outreach meetings, and just bring everyone back together to talk about the issues.
Okay, great. And then, thanks, thanks Debbie. And then, as far as the FMP process, I know Noah talked a little bit about this, but I'm really interested in the next steps as far as community workshops, those types of involvements, strategies with the community moving forward, because even beyond selecting a site tonight, we have a long, we still have a lot of process to go. There's going to be a lot of information, what opportunities are there, what kind of strategies are there going to be to get some community workshops, have a little bit more discussions? I know we were talking maybe specifically about the facilities master plan, but maybe you can tell, talk a little bit about that.
Sure, so I think we will, want to take a couple of weeks to re-initiate the facility master plan process with Black and Beach, and also to get ESA, who's doing our Sequa work, up and going. You know, my, my goal, or our goal would be at the next WRF CAC meeting, to be able to lay out an updated outreach plan like we prepared eight months ago, when the project first started, to lay out the schedule in the order in which we want to host, to hold those meetings and workshops, get input back from WRF CAC, get input from council on that as well, in the same timeframe, and be able to lay that out over the next, over the next five months past that.
Okay. I think that's, those are all the questions I have, so at this point, I think it'd be prudent to get into the public comment period, and I'll name off the public comment person, and then the person behind them, so we have an idea who's up and where we're going. We do have three, Dana will set the time clock for three minutes. Look forward to everybody's comments, and when the three-minute clock does end, I may ask you to kind of help along with that, so everybody has an opportunity to speak. And with that, Barbara Dorr, if you can start us off with public comment, and then Bonnie Sario?
Barbara Dorr, I've been doing a lot of reading lately. I'm supposed to be last, I'm not supposed to be first, because I turned my card in last, but I'll go, it's okay. Your rules and procedures, policies and procedures. I guess I first want to say thank you for listening to your community and looking at the TRW site and alternatives. First and foremost, I would think, and I've, each of the steps along, I think you really have to do, as Mr. Buckingham said, the number one priority is your wastewater treatment plant, water reclamation facility, and not your corporate yard. You may need it, it may be a wonderful thing, and your staff should have it, but you just can't take any chances moving ahead. If there's a little extra space, put that buffer zone in around, around the reclamation facility. One point I do have a concern about, and I hope it's well addressed as you do your studies, its potential impacts on the estuary, and there may be redundancies, and there may be extra power, but there are already, I believe, outfalls, or other water from maybe CMC going into that creek, and it could be devastating for our estuary, and our tourist industry would just fall, and that would be a real mistake. So, if you're going to build some ponds or something, build extra special so that you really are protecting our estuary, that's critical. And I'm concerned about the Sequa process. What you've done is, I guess about a month or so, a couple of months ago, I read where you said, oh, in one of the reports, keep the Righetti project in there as a potential alternate site for Sequa, and I thought, wow, that's about the dumbest thing I've ever heard. If you're going to have alternate sites, have realistic sites, choose sites that if the TRW site doesn't work, that you would say, yes, we can actually use this other site. You're going to do, spend thousands and thousands of dollars studying that site, and in the end, you're going to be so far along, what you'll do is, we have to proceed, we have to go with this site regardless, and you'll just say overriding considerations, and all the negative impacts will just go to naught, and all the studies will be wasted. So carefully choose your alternate sites, and when you tell people it's a TRW site, tell them what the alternatives are. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Bonnie Sario, and then Sandy Tandler.
Hello, thank you. Thank you, staff and council. My name is Bonnie Sario, I live in Nutmeg, and I want to thank you for all your efforts in looking at the TRW site and making it a valid consideration, and not just focusing all your energy into the Righetti site. I'm in agreement with the TRW site, I think it's a location that would be less visible for the public, and there wouldn't be any neighbors or residents that would be just in a very close proximity to it, and I'm hoping that wherever it goes, that the proposed projects will offset the cost for all of us involved. I'd like to comment on the article in the New Times recently, in particular, the picture of the lady sitting in the living room overlooking the Righetti property where the new project would go. I don't know if any of you saw it, but I found it very disturbing. I feel that they were sitting in their living room, and the project was just right there. I know that I have worked hard for the home that I have and that I live in, and that I chose it because of the surroundings and its appeal. In your last meeting, I heard one comment that because of the Sequa, we couldn't take the Righetti project off of the list, and then in another comment, I heard it could be taken off. So, I'm unclear as to this, but I feel that it, it can be taken off, and I'm just hoping that you will take it off. I don't think it's a valid consideration for the project to be there, and I want to thank you for your time.
Thank you. Sandy Tandler, and then James Pauli.
Sandy Tandler, Morro Bay, you have a very efficient and effective citizens advisory committee, and I was really hoping that tonight you could take your advice and remove the Righetti property from the project list of possible sites. It has come to my attention that there are six fatal flaws on the Righetti property, and one of these flaws is asbestos in rocks, which is kind of shocking, that can be deadly if the rocks are crushed and the asbestos is airborne, we have a lot of wind here. That's just one of six flaws. So, I'm hoping... So, I'm hoping, I still don't quite understand why the Rigetti property cannot be taken off the list. You'll have to explain it to me again, I'm a little slow, I guess. I love the Tri-W property, and I hope that you will concentrate on that, and thank you very much for listening partially to your Citizens Advisory Committee. Thank you.
Thank you. James Pauli, and then Mark Hanson.
Hi, Jim Pauli, Morro Bay. I really came here tonight to congratulate all of you, supervisors, and then the staff. And I guess the key thing is, you've done a lot of work, you've done a lot of fantastic work, and still you're slipping a little bit saying, well, you know, can we keep this in in case? You recommended the Tri-W site as your premium spot that you'd like to go, and all you have to do is vote a yes tonight. But I think you should continue. I think you're well on your way. You can really start in on this project and get it done. And I go along with what the city manager said, you know? You got to get going on that major facility. But one thing I get concerned about, and others have raised it, is this, you know, well, how about the Rigetti? Well, how about this one? I think it kind of gives a false thought in people's minds that, well, we can do this maybe. I think you're getting to the point where you're committed, and you've really done a decent job, fine job. Go with it. Just as you are intending to recommend Tri-W, do it. And don't be concerned about Rigetti, and I would just drop them out of the whole thing. Those sites that you're not really interested in, because it's a lot of money you're going to be putting into this, and you want to be focused on the Tri-W. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Mark Hanson, and then Donna Burke.
My name is Mark Hanson. I live here in Morro Bay for the last four years and two months, and I don't usually come to these meetings because I usually end up getting so pissed off that my blood pressure raises to an unsafe level. I'm upset because I got out from under $190 million sewer by Lou moving from Los Osos to Morro Bay four years ago. And now I'm looking at, again, at a sewer project that's probably going to be over $100 million. This project should have been built years ago and already been up and running for maybe 30 to 40 million at the original site where it's been for years, for decades and been working fine. There was no reason why the permit should have been denied, although I know, Mayor, that you were instrumental in getting the California Coastal Commission to help deny the permit for that site. I saw a letter that you wrote. I've been in contact with several people in Cayuga, so they're pretty upset with you also, because they own 40% now of a piece of property that's worthless and is not saleable, and they can't do anything about that. And you all helped kill a project that could have been shared by Cayuga's where they would have paid 30% of the cost. So, a project that maybe would have cost 30 to 40 million is now going to be over $100 million, which we have to pay for, and you don't have any concern about us and people like me who are on a fixed income retiree. You know, this, again, project could have been done a lot cheaper. It should be up and running at the site it's been for years. That site's worked fine, that site's already been permanently damaged, it can never be repaired. I saw some of the reasons why it shouldn't have been rebuilt there, they were ridiculous reasons. Everything from a 50-foot tsunami, which of course is possible because we live on the Ring of Fire, but if we had a 50-foot tsunami, we'd have a lot bigger problems to worry about than the sewer, like the high school and all the people in the cloisters and every, everybody who lives between the rock and the north end of Cayuga, so nobody seems to be worried about them. So, a 50-foot tsunami, that's ridiculous. Or returning the area to the wonderful, as we know, moral shoulder-banded snail and the kangaroo rat, they were mentioned in the study as to why we should return this pristine land back to its original, whatever it was, 50, 60 years ago. And now we're going to eat up more pristine land and egg land out in the country when we could have built this where it's been for years. And I just don't know why you were so instrumental in killing that. And I don't blame just you, but people that came before you, because this has been kicked, their hands have been kicked down the road for years and years. And money's been wasted on study after study after study, and new locations have been chosen. Originally, the only ones on the table were the Chevron Torrel Creek site, which could have been shared with Cayuga's, and the Rigetti site and its current site. Rancho Colina wasn't even there, and then they're on, and then they're back off, and now Rigetti is maybe off. You've just wasted so much money and years when this could have been up and running, and we wouldn't even be having this discussion. So, having moved here from Los Osos, that really annoys me.
Thank you. Donna Burke, and then Lee Kleim.
Hi, I'm Donna Burke, and good evening, City Council and Mayor Jamie Irons. I live on Nutmeg, and I am in support of following the WRF CAC's recommendation to take the Rigetti site off of the WRF list of potential sites. It's not compatible with the existing land use, and it affects too many people there. The Rigetti site absolutely shouldn't be considered as an alternate site in the analysis EIR. It'd be good to stop wasting money and proceeding in that direction. I am in favor of the Tri-W site, South Bay Boulevard, for the following reasons. The WRF CAC recommends it there. I've been going to the meetings, I'm very impressed with the committee and their recommendation. It impacts the least amount of residents, since it's not very close to an existing neighborhood. At the last meeting, one of the ladies from Blue Heron asked the distance, and it was replied that it's .67 miles away. So, that's like two-thirds of a mile away from the Blue Heron residency, and that's not very close. It just affects less people. It's also visually screened from Highway 1, causing no visual implications. The property is flat, it's easier to build on, therefore, you know, would probably certainly cost less money to build there versus on a hillier site. The city's other goals could be built there, should that seem feasible. The site is also on a frontage street, which would greatly eliminate potential traffic issues compared to Highway 41. And the reclaimed water could be used for the Morro Bay Golf Course and also for the Choro Valley. In addition, it could go to the Morro Valley. The Tri-W is a safer site for a WRF, since flammable gases will not be near residential homes, and the city would save money on legal fees, since the majority of Morro Bay residents are in support of the WRF at Tri-W. The city would also only need to buy the portion of land at Tri-W that it needs, therefore also saving money in that manner. I urge you to locate the WRF at the Tri-W site. Thank you.
Thank you, Donna. Lee Kleim, and then Lexi Bell.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council, and all people. Everybody has a copy of what I said. I apologize for getting it to you late, but I'll just read the cover letter, and then you can take the rest of the report.
Thank you.
Sounds like Chevron is the way to go. Dear Council members, the purpose of this letter and the task report of a professional analysis of the alternative is to address the current circumstances of the evaluation by your agency of sites for a location of the new wastewater reclamation facility. The evaluation attached was performed at my request as both an interested and potentially impacted property owner in the city of Morro Bay. The evaluation speaks to approach appropriate uses of all of the sites currently considered, with the emphasis on the improvement of the city of Morro Bay in general, rather than simply concluding whether each site is good condition for WRF. I believe this, I'm sorry, I have bad glasses here, so apologize. I believe this important to demonstrate that in ruling out a site for the WRF, that not only was the site unacceptable, but the site is more suitable for an alternative use. We heard that tonight. As a brief overview of the report, the report includes a brief discussion of each of the present locations and the consideration for building the WTF. Those sites, which consist of Tri-W site, Madonna site, Gianini site, Rancho Colina site, Rigetti site, and the Chevron site, are individually reviewed based upon a number of considerations, including, but not limited to, impact on the surrounding area, ease of access, visual impact, cost of effectiveness, future expansion, and more listed in the report. As the report emphasizes, however, the focus on the need to improve the community environment as a whole while avoiding the loss of significant property value and spiraling costs. The conclusion of the report is that most suitable location for the WTF for a city of Morro Bay only facility, the only for Morro Bay, is the Gianini site. In contrast, the conclusion of the report for a joint facility with Cayuga's, the most suitable location is the Chevron site. All the items that listed here, they're knocked out. The report also recommends that the existing facility be kept in operation for, used for storage, or used for storage. With regard to the Gianini site, the report notes that its strong points are that it is a location in which the W2FTF would be largely concealed and not generally visible from the surrounding area. In addition, it is readily accessible. In contrast, the report observes that the Rigetti site and Rancho Colina site should be removed from consideration of having a significant impact of surrounding uses, including on the value of the residential, such as my own. With regard to Chevron...
Mr. Kleim, the three-minute clock rang, and I'm going to have to ask you to conclude.
Okay. Please read it, please read the report. Give the gentleman a call, he'll take the call. And I think for the benefit of the community, of both communities, you'll like the report. Thanks very much for listening.
Thank you, Mr. Kleim. Lexi Bell, followed by Cal Huler, I hope I pronounced that, Cal Huler?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Lexi Bell, I'm the Estuary Program Executive Director, and I just wanted to speak a little bit about the Morro Bay watershed and give you a little perspective from where we are and how we might connect with the project. So, thank you for allowing me time to speak. I put up a map of the Morro Bay watershed, just to give you the perspective that we talk about this whole area that drains into the Morro Bay estuary as the Morro Bay watershed. And the site you're considering is up there in sort of the top-left corner of the watershed. So, your sphere is sort of an overlapping Venn diagram circle, a little above and beyond that map, but we do overlap in that area. Shakey red dot. So, that's where you guys are considering, and so it is right inside the watershed. As I think somebody else mentioned, we have two other treatment plants that are within the Morro Bay watershed. The new Los Osos sewer treatment plant is within the watershed. That plant is addressing water quality issues that were existing within the watershed. The California Men's Colony is another treatment plant within the watershed. Someone else mentioned that plant. It does release treated effluent into Choro Creek. So, that's kind of what we're thinking about when we think about impacts to the estuary is these other things that are happening. This potential site would be a new use within the watershed, introducing some new impacts, perhaps introducing some new recycled water uses as well. So, from the perspective of looking at the estuary in the watershed, and our major focus is water quality in the estuary, making sure the estuary is clean and healthy, not only for the wildlife, but also for the people that use the bay, for the residents, and for the visitors that come to enjoy the bay and support the city. So, we think about that, and we think about how can uses like this use be best designed to minimize impact. There was some discussion of that already, I really appreciate that, and we would look forward to being a part of that discussion and talking about how can we best mitigate any impacts if you are to continue on the road with this site. Things like stormwater runoff, how to address those issues, how to address the creeks that you mentioned that are adjacent to the sites you're considering, keeping that water clean, and, you know, potential issues like spill and those kinds of things. So, there's lots of things to discuss, and we're interested in being a part of that process. I wanted to give you that perspective that we're thinking about the watershed as a whole. Even though that whole watershed is not part of your city, it impacts the bay, which the city relies on, so, thank you.
Thanks, Lexi. Cal Huler, followed John Minow.
Good evening. My name is Cal Huler, a residence of the San Andres Valley, but I do own two lots here in Morro Bay, one on Laurel and one on Nutmeg. There are three reasons why the Rigetti property should be removed right now from the list of sites under consideration for a sewage processing facility. Reason number one, imposing a heavy industrial-use facility, such as a sewage treatment plant, in close and visible proximity to a long-established residential neighborhood is wrong-headed, to say the least. Reason number two, the Rigetti site for a sewage treatment plant robs the residents of the impacted neighborhood of peace of mind. Imagine the angst and emotional stress these people have suffered and experienced for months on end, as Rigetti has been determined by you and your planning department as a preferred site for the sewage processing plant. Imagine if you would, the loss of aesthetic appeal of their homes if a sewage treatment plant is built on the Rigetti site in full view of their cherished homes. Property values have already been adversely impacted, and will continue to be adversely impacted if a sewage treatment facility is built in full view of their homes. In summary, citizens of Morro Bay who will live in full view of the sewage processing facility have been already harmed emotionally and financially by your decision to keep Rigetti under consideration as a site for the sewage treatment plant. Reason number three, trust in city government has already been adversely impacted. How can you trust a city government that is degrading and compromising the most important possession most of us own? That most important possession is called our homes. In conclusion, the correct and right action is for the city government to immediately remove the Rigetti property as a site for its sewage treatment facility. Just in this aside, I noticed that staff has a chart that shows the email traffic as to how people feel about the differing sites. I think it would be appropriate to also have a chart to show how people that come to all these meetings are feeling about Rigetti versus other sites under consideration. It would just be more fair if you saw that in a chart form. I am for Tri-West, or Tri-W, and as an alternate, the Chevron site. And the reason is, it has the last, the least impact, both sites, to the residents of your fine town. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Huler. John Minow, and then Bob Keller.
Good evening, Council. My name's John Minow. Mr. Buckingham addressed an issue that I've kind of kept in context here because I'm not a public speaker, I'm going to read this. So anyhow, you did address it. I am a neighbor of the Tri-W site to the east of the property. The proposed site locations recommended by staff are very close to my property boundary. To access the site and easement will be required from me. The Bay Foundation also holds a conservation easement on my property, and they would also need to give permission, which likely would involve attorneys from the Coastal Conservancy. One other property owner will have to be crossed to get to the site and an easement from them as well. The location of the plant at either of these sites would certainly devalue our property and have other undesirable effects. That said, the site located closest to Highway 1 would be the lesser of evils in that regard. I run a commercial cowcalf business. We utilize a rotational grazing program, which is different than most ranches. This type of livestock management has many environmental benefits, but also many challenges. Human activity near our cattle, especially at certain times of the year, can be particularly difficult. The location of the sewer plant itself, although certainly not desired, is not my greatest concern. The proposed addition of a park, which you referenced, and Corporation Yard is. If one of the Tri-W sites is selected... If one of the Tri-W sites is selected, please do not include these other uses. Keep the use limited to what is necessary for the operation and maintenance of the plant and the footprint as small as possible. Expanding the size and uses would not only have a negative impact on our agricultural operation, but it could also increase mitigation costs for the city on what already is a very expensive location. The city has a corporation yard near the existing plant. When the old plant is removed, even more space will be available. Keeping these activities at the existing site would be more centrally located, and more importantly, would protect loss of agricultural land and reduce conflicts in the agricultural zone. Additionally, less land acquisition would be necessary, and hiding the sewer plant from public view would be much more easily accomplished. Having a sewer plant as a neighbor will be bad enough for us. Please don't add to our woes by including unnecessary urban and industrial uses in the coastal agricultural zone. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Minow. Bob Keller. And make sure that the mic, please adjust the mic for the speakers coming up so we can make sure that the audio carries through the recording for AGP. Thank you.
How's this? Does this sound good?
That sounds good. Thank you.
Bob Keller, City of Morro Bay.
And then Bob Thorson is next.
City of Morro Bay. We, first priority, we have to secure a site as soon as possible because without a site, our city's paralyzed. So, I'm going to go with the staff report. I recommend the city council to accept the staff report to consider South Bay Boulevard, which is also considered Tri-W, as the preferred site. We have a deadline, and with all the compatibility issues on the other sites, this could be a favorable site with the least resistance. Never will be able to find a perfect site because all sites have issues. No one wants it near their property. So, anyway, I would prefer that we look at this site real close because we can't waste more time because it's going to be costly. And another priority is concerning Cayucus. I recommend the city council to honor the CSD commitment to go on their own with their facility. We both have different needs and goals. A partnership would not work, especially since we won't be equal partners. There'll be fairness issues, and there'll be a lot of concerns, and this could cause a lot of difficulties. So, if they want to be, join us, they give me a customer if they decide, and they can use our facility. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Rob Thorson, and then Bart Beckman.
My name's Rob Thorson. I live out on Little Morro Creek Road.
Can you adjust the mic? Yeah, thank you. I just want to make sure that-
Rob Thorson, Little Morro Creek Road. Does that work?
Yep, that's good.
Hey, I want to thank, you know, Mayor Irons and Mike Nunley and Noah Nelson for coming out. I do believe that our conversations, both Friday and yesterday, were done in a true spirit of cooperation and support. I feel like that you're probably going in the direction of the Tri-W piece, which obviously we've stated, and I gave you that well-delineated email, so I'm not going to go into all of that because the details are there. So, if you are going to go down that path of the Tri-W spot, you know, I just want to reassert three things. One of them is that we do look at that 10-acre portion that's southerly most located of those two options. That'd be one. And then, two, that you do limit it to a single-use avenue, which again, you addressed today too. So, we are definitely concerned about the public use, you know, input there. And then, three, that it fits in with the agrarian surroundings that are there so that it's detailed in such a manner that it doesn't disrupt, you know, an agricultural layout. So, those are all my concerns. I'm not going to use three minutes, so I do appreciate it, and thank you, guys.
Thank you, Rob. Next, Bart Beckman, and then Tina Metzger.
Bart Beckman, Morro Bay. First, thank you, thank you very much for all the work that you've done, the time that you've put in to really analyze this. The WerfCAC group, I can't say enough for them. They have been absolutely fabulous, a very staunch group. I didn't necessarily agree with everything they wanted to do, but that's not going to happen. I believe we're going forward with Tri-W, so I'm not going to try to reinforce that. What I'd like to do is talk about some steps that I think we ought to do going forward. One, there were some bullet points on the schedule. I think we ought to have by the next WerfCAC meeting, and certainly by the next council meeting, a schedule that gets us from here to the December 2016 and the March 2017 points. Black and Veatch apparently is doing some of this, but basically, milestones ought to be at least every month. So, every time you come here, where are we? Are we making it? Are we making progress towards being there? Secondly, I agree with Councilman Johnson that I think we can walk and chew gum. I think that schedule ought to address these ancillary facilities. They've been buried in the discussions up until now. Let's talk about them. Let's make decisions on whether more corporate yards are going to go, are we going to do composting or not. Third, Mr. Buckingham talked about the solar. That's not one of the corporate goals, but it keeps coming up. But it's not known. Are we going to try to make an all-inclusive power play for all power associated with the sewer treatment plant, just what's on site, how many acres? Basically, it's a concept, it's a thought. If you want it, think about it, put some action to it, and let's move forward. Look, we had a WerfCAC meeting where a vegetarian could get along with some cattle ranchers. I think we can move forward. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Beckman. Tina Metzger.
Tina Metzger, Nutmeg Avenue, Morro Bay. I couldn't help but think that this water treatment facility might help the ranchers in that it would provide beautiful green grass during the summer and fall with the water that it produces. We're going to have so much wonderful water to ship up to the King Street Water Towers and the golf course and Holden Check, the saltwater intrusion of the Choro Valley, and there's going to be a lot left over, I'm sure, for the ranchers and their cows. And I'm not quite sure how many acres each cow needs a year to chew on, but I'm sure that we can build a facility that'll work on the Tri-W. But what I really want to talk about is the hammer that's over all of our heads in the neighborhoods near the Rigetti property. It's time, it's more than time, for you council members to remove the Rigetti property from this process once and for all. It's not a viable site, and I wish you would just accept that. Face the truth, there are so many problems with it. It will never be a viable site. It's time to just vote to remove it so that we can get on with our lives, remove this hammer that's constantly hanging over our heads, and give us back our peace because you have stolen it and you continue to steal it until this issue is resolved. Thank you.
Thank you, Tina. Bill Martoni.
Good evening, Bill Martoni, Morro Bay. After about four or five years, I think the Tri-W's coming to the top. It was kind of a lot of beating a dead horse for a while, but it looked like we're getting there. My only disappointment is probably not studying or kicking out the city portion of the Tri-W, which I think is probably a superior location, but I'm not saying that the location you have now is not good. I think it's a very good location, but I think for several reasons, I don't know if you've even taken a trip up to the old dairy or where the dairy was, and there's a hidden little bowl that's totally hidden from the neighborhoods, from the city, everything else, inside the city limits. It's very close as far as your pipeline. It's only about half the distance. It gravity feeds into both valleys like I originally talked about. Where you're at now doesn't gravity feed into the Morro Valley. You're down next to the Choro Valley. I don't see that's a huge issue. Any sewage you pump up and over to South Bay Boulevard has to come up to that altitude in either respect, so you're not picking up any steam by pumping it up and then dropping it to a lower elevation. The other thing is, outside of being inside the city limits, under city control, you don't have to go through the county. The original, I think it was Measure D that put a restriction on 13 acres. It's zoned commercial. The remainder is zoned ag, like your county zoning is zoned ag. It's inside the city limits, zoned ag. I don't believe you're restricted by the Measure D restrictions. It's something you could check into, but I don't think the ag zoning is restricted. The other thing is, if you look by the Red Rock Pit just past where the dairy was in the county, if you wanted to get a little further out, if you wanted to be on county property, you could go right past where the palm tree is, and you can see where the Red Rock Pit is, and there's even a hidden area a little further back on county property across a property line that would also work. So, I recommend not to toss out the city piece as an option. I'm not saying where you're at isn't a good option, but I think the city might be a better option. The other thing, as far as your pipeline, you can follow the old transmission line. It's the same line as where the Whale Rock Line runs, so you don't have to tear up city property to get there. It's a closer location to follow the old PG and easement or your Whale Rock easement to get from your current wastewater treatment plant to either site rather than going through the city, and this would be much closer. And again, this would not affect the Harbor Track at all. That little bowl over by the dairy is totally hidden from them and hidden from the city, and also your Red Rock Pit is. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Mary Jo DeSio, and then Bill Todd.
Good evening, city council members. Thank you very much for the efforts that you've conducted on the behalf of our community. This is probably one of the most important decisions that I've been party to in my life. I drove home seven and a half hours, very long, difficult drive from Lake Tahoe to be here for this meeting tonight. It's that important to me, and in a couple of days, I'll turn around and go back up, and if I have to, I'll do it again. But I want you to know that it's better to look at you and say that than to write you a letter or send you an email. This is really, really important to me. I live on a block from Nutmeg on Laurel, and the idea of having this facility in my front yard, close to it, is so disturbing, as Tina described it, a hammer on your head. So, I'd like this pain to go away. I really would appreciate you moving finally forward on the Tri-W site, and please remove Rigetti from the list. From everything that we've talked about, we know it's a poor site for those intentions. I don't think anyone can really come up with a compelling reason to go forward with Rigetti. I think we need to make a decision, and we need to make that decision and move forward. I'm concerned that we're still spending money to the Rigetti Trust, making payments, good-faith payments, when in fact, we probably don't need to be doing that. So, are we paying double payments? Are we paying money to the Rigetti Trust, and are we paying or going to pay money now to move forward on Tri-W? Who else are we paying? So, those are things that kind of came to my mind. I know you can't answer it tonight, but I will be sending you a letter and asking for that explanation. I think Mr. Buckingham made a very good point. We have one charge, and that is, we have to come up with a solution to our wastewater treatment facility. That was the whole crux of the dilemma when the Coastal Commission said, here's what you need to do. And so, they didn't say, put a solar plant up. They didn't say, look at your corp yard. They said, it's a water reclamation facility you need. And I think we have to keep that as our major focus. The others can be certainly in our plan, and we can address those differently, but I don't see that it has to be a question that is wrapped together and can't be disassembled. So, I thank you for your time. I thank you for meeting with each of us and being so kind in your responses when sometimes we might have been a little aggressive. But I think when it's your home, when it's your air that you breathe, it's the quality of your life, sometimes you need to get a little military. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Bill Todd, and then Stu Skiff.
Good evening, everyone. Bill Todd from Morro Bay. I live on Lower Nutmeg as well. I just have some concerns that I think need to be addressed, and one of them is just the poor job of public outreach when negotiations broke down with Kalima and why we weren't advised before the city pulled the trigger on $25,000 deposit for Rigetti. And it seems like you're doing an awesome job right now of public outreach, and these, and, you know, but there was no public outreach when we were being exposed to this. So, it's a concern of mine, and it really bothers me, but, you know, I just don't, I don't want to live in the past, and I think most of you know that I own an auto repair shop here in town, and, you know, it seems like a month doesn't go by where a customer comes in and says, will my knocking, smoking car make it to Los Angeles? I'm like, I don't know, you know? And my son jokingly bought me a crystal ball. And I know, you know, we're asking you as a council to kind of project the future, and I know that you and I can't tell the future, but what concerns me is that knowing that you don't know any fatal flaws with the Tri-W site, it seems like the Rigetti property is going to be the quick and easy fix to, as you put it, minimize escalating costs. And so, to me, it's like, you know, you, if there are any flaws at Tri-W, Rigetti is still on the list, and it's a quick and easy fix, but I can assure you, it's not going to be a quick and easy fix because there's a lot of opposition to this. And I know that the committee that meets in the, what is it, the WRF CAC, they, you know, they advised you guys to take Rigetti off, and I just, I'd like to again ask you guys to take the, remove the Rigetti as a viable alternative as it will not minimize escalating costs if it is chosen. And lastly, I agree that the Tri-W should only be used for the WRF and recommend other uses be contained at the existing facility. Thank you.
Thank you. Stu Skiff, and then Linda Warwick.
Councilmember in public, for quite a few years, I was a treasurer of the Cayucus Lions Club, and I know many members there, including members of their Cayucus sanitation district. One of the issues that they had with us, with us and our movement forward was the finish date, and we kept moving and going on. This process has been going on for quite a few years, and they were anxious to get started and had little confidence in our ability to move forward and going. And we are doing that now, and I commend you for doing that. They also wanted their share of the tertiary water back so that they could process it. As you know, water costs us around $1,500 an acre foot, which serves six houses. It's expensive water here on the coast, and that's an important issue, and that's one of their sticking points. Cayucus should be with us and sign up with us on a contract, or they should be out and be on their own on the property that they've put a contract on, on the Choro Creek Road. If they choose to do the DIY process, then we should build the plant smaller for less money and save the money. Why build it to send another thousand connections when we're not going to have them? And let's get the price- connections when we're not going to have them, and let's get the price of the plant down? The location, we should make a decision based on whether the location makes common sense. We should include traffic and business. That 41 deals with, I believe the number was 7,800 vehicle trips a day. A lot of those are campers and trailers and people that come here and spend money. And when you look at regetti and you look at the rest of the property over there, we're talking about tearing up that road, and don't say we're not going to do it, and we are. And that's going to hurt business here in town, and in times where it looks like we're headed for a recession, that's not a good idea to put it there. So I would say Highway 41, anything on 41 is a bad idea. You cannot please everyone, so bear that in mind. You're always going to have 92%, 51% that are happy with what you're doing, and the rest won't be. So Tri-W seems to be the path of least resistance, so let's move forward on that. Also, I would encourage our, Mike Nolte and the group to get moving and concurrently do things with permits and the EIR and all of that. We can get all that started and going. Cayucus has got it going now. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Stu. And finally, Linda Warwick.
My name is Linda Warwick. I live on Juniper Avenue. The pressure and the stress and the sleepless nights of not having this regetti issue resolved and finally put to bed is just, it's just too much. It's not what any neighborhood should have to bear. And the regetti site is simply radioactive. If it, if it isn't taken off, it's going to lead to lawsuits that go on and on and delays, and not just now, but in the future. I mean, it could seriously damage our Morro Bay's finances, even bankrupt a city, which I'd hate to see. It's weighing on us just too much. It's not fair to this community. We feel like we're not being heard because we've put it all out there, but it's still sitting there as a, as an viable alternative, and it just can't be. It's, we need to know that you're listening and that this is going to be resolved tonight, and that it's going to be taken off as a, as a possibility. Unless you live on our streets, you just don't know how we feel. The thought of a human raw sewage spillage around our homes is, is something that just is so disgusting and sickening and upsetting that, well, we know it's a possibility. And until regetti is, is just out of our lives, it's, it's just not a happy time for any of us, so I'd really like to be heard. And additionally, if, even if I didn't live in Morro Bay, I would be outraged that an industrial site would blemish such a remarkably beautiful and highly visible natural landscape, dot it with such a charming barn structure. It makes me sick. It, I don't know why regetti was even thought of in the first place, but anyway, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thanks, Linda. And that concludes our public comment. Wanted to thank everybody's comments, and I, it was, appreciate everybody in the waves. Instead of the clapping, it allowed everybody to continue the momentum of delivering their comments, and everybody had the time to do that. There were a number of questions, and I'll look to staff to see if they jotted those down, and I'll look at my list to make sure that they're checked off as well. Mr. Buckingham, looks like you're on, on point for that?
Sure, great. Thanks, Mayor. I just wanted to just take a moment and, and address some of the questions that were, that were brought up or asked, and also to perhaps provide fuller or more accurate information on some of the statements that were made. I've got a number of notes here, at least one that I'm going to throw over to Mike and Rob, and then we'll see if we missed any, and you can help us know about those. So first, there was at least one reference, and then several in emails about both the New Times article and the Bay News articles specifically with reference to cost. So both of those publications recently got their articles a little bit wrong on, on cost for the site. Both of them made the same mistake. They, they compared the construction cost that we have been quoting for over a year now of around $100 million for, for Phase 1. They confused that with a, a later report where they quoted the construction costs plus the first 20 years of operations. So that is labor, that is energy, that is maintenance, that is repair on a system for 20 years. So the Bay, or the New Times ran a correction last week, which we really appreciate, but a lot of people don't see those corrections. So I just want to make clear for the community that the, that the cost, the estimated cost remains $102 million for Phase 1 and Phase 2 of construction. And then, of course, once construction's done, there will be operating the plant, and we'll be paying the guys that operate the plant and maintenance and all that. There were several references tonight and in many of the emails about the, the WRFCAC, and just sort of just do what the WRFCAC says. I think it's worth taking just a quick moment to, to review the role of our advisory boards and our advisory bodies. So the council really gets its input from four places. One is from advisory boards and advisory bodies. The second is from expert staff. Third is from our legal advisor, and then fourth is from your constituents, from, from our residents. The WRFCAC is one of those bodies from which you get input. The WRFCAC does not get all of those inputs. So the WRFCAC gets input, does not have our attorney normally at their meetings, and so they, they don't get the same sort of legal assessment that perhaps the council gets, and the WRFCAC doesn't have, none of, none of our advisory bodies have constituents. They are, they are appointed, but so their decisions or their recommendations, they don't have the same weight of really having to face the voter and, and respond to all of the constituents in the city. So it's important, I think, to note for everybody that the WRFCAC or in any advisory board, the Planning Commission, a public works advisory board, is one advisory body that, that you listen to along with your staff and your attorney and your constituents. Third, there's a question about payments to the regetti trust. There are no further payments to the regetti trust for, to, to essentially reserve the regetti properties so we could go through this process. There was a single one-time payment, and they are currently of $25,000, and there are no further payments to any other, or no payments to any other, other entities ongoing right now or being considered right now. There's been substantial, substantial reference to the fatal flaws of the regetti site, and I'm sort of quite concerned about, about that process, about that fatal flaws memo. Really, my assessment is that fatal flaws memo is actually fatally flawed. It is, it contains gross exaggerations. It contains completely inaccurate statements that really introduce fear and misunderstanding and misinformation in the process. And since that is germane to part of your decision tonight, I think it's important to note, the, the fatal flaws memo says that there's a fatal flaws, says there is no effective way to control asbestos fibers that are released. Actually, that the, it's important for all of us to understand, looking at a State Air Quality Control Board document, that large regions of the Western United States, including most counties in California, contain abundant naturally occurring asbestos deposits. This is not something that is unusual at all.
Dave, one thing I'd like to do is I'd like to point out, I put a map together of naturally, of areas where naturally occurring, natural occurring asbestos is a concern in San Luis Obispo County. And if you see all the green areas covering San Luis Obispo, Morro Bay, a big chunk of the coastline, are all areas where it could occur.
Good. So this is, it's a normal thing, and this other document I'm looking at is from the, the Local Air Quality Control Board. It's actually their response to a fairly major industrial project in the county. And what it says is that if naturally occurring asbestos is found at the, at the site, the applicant must comply with all the requirements outlined in the asbestos ATCM. This may include development of an asbestos dust mitigation plan and asbestos health and safety program for removal, et cetera. The, the point is that when the memo says there is no effective way to control asbestos fibers, that's just wrong. The county has very clear guidelines and we, and deals with it all the time. One of the fatal flaws refers to the quote, "many diesel trucks needed daily to transport the sewage sludge to a Santa Maria licensed receiver," and that will also degrade air quality. Actually, right now, there's about four diesel trucks a year that transport sludge from our existing wastewater treatment plant out of, out of the, the city. That might increase to one or two a month with the new facility.
Or could be, you know, it could ultimately, you're going to have a higher level of, of water quality, higher level of treatment. I mean, to see trucks twice a week delivering sewage may be, may be expected, but we're not talking 10 trucks a day or anything.
So when it says "many diesel trucks needed daily," I just want to make sure that we understand that that, that is not accurate. It also discusses about thinking about the high school students that will be affected by all of those diesel trucks. It sort of doesn't talk about the fact that the existing wastewater treatment plant is 300 feet from the high school, and that moving the wastewater treatment plant will be a significant improvement in that, and if it moved, wherever it moves, whether it moves to regetti or to, or to Tri-W or to Rancho Calina, none of those trucks are going to pass by the high school anymore. So introducing the high school into this memo is concerning. It also states that the, that the regetti site is inconsistent with the local coastal plan. Actually, coastal staff has been briefed on all of, on the regetti site and the Rancho Calina site and now the Tri-W site, and they have given general support for all of those sites. So it is, wherever we choose to build the water reclamation facility, it will take coordination with coastal staff. Will take likely a modification to the local coastal plan, but, but that is going to be part of the process for any of these. Another fatal flaw is it notes that, that the regetti site will take 10 years to, to build the WRF there. That is, is not correct. We've got a firm five-year plan, as you know. As soon as we make a decision on where our, our preferred site is going to be, our goal and our standard will be to complete the project Phase 1 in five years. Finally, it notes that it is a fatal flaw because there are nine different regulatory agencies and 14 regulatory permits that will have to be coordinated with. That's a fact wherever we go. We're going to have to coordinate with those agencies and get those permits, whether we go to Rancho Calina, Madonna, Regetti, Tri-W, Chevron. So identifying that as a fatal flaw to regetti just isn't completely accurate. There was a question about the schedule and having a more detailed schedule. Actually, you've seen several times a very detailed five-year schedule. Perhaps some in the audience haven't seen that. They haven't been part of the process for, for the last three years with, with us. But the, and as Mike mentioned in his presentation, as soon as we have a decision on site preference, then we will update that five-year schedule that has precisely what was discussed. It has, it goes month by month, quarter by quarter, on exactly what the planning, permitting, and construction schedule is for the entire process. There was a question or a statement that solar is not part of the goals. What, what the goal says is quote, "designed for energy recovery," and from the, from the earliest days of discussing what that meant, that meant in part some level of energy generation, renewable energy generation, and really, solar is likely the only generation possibility for, for this project. So while the word solar doesn't appear in the goals, that has clearly been one of the community goals in the whole process. There was a question right near the end on why the Nutmeg neighborhood was not consulted when the $25,000 payment was spent on the regetti MOU. First point in that is that regetti has been the alternate site, the prime alternate with Rancho Calina for well over a year, year and a half now. And so when we identified, we all identified that there were some substantial concerns at Rancho Calina. It was, the appropriate thing to do was to go to our first alternative, which has been the first alternative again for a long period of time. And, and when we're involved in a property negotiation, what we don't want to do is conduct a property negotiation in public. So, so what we did actually with, with council consent was to, was to go and negotiate an MOU with, with regetti, so we were sure that we had, had the opportunity to consider our primary alternative. And as soon as that MOU was executed and was completed, we brought that to the council and to the community in open session. Finally, there were a couple of points near the end about, about Cayucus. The, one about, one of the issues with Cayucus was that they wanted a share of the, of the water, and that was absolutely part of every discussion. There was never any statement or any indication that the city would be in a position to withhold their share of the water. There was, oh, and then, secondly, there was a, not a question, but an encouragement, a point to, to be ready to do things concurrently. The, the EIR, the facility master plan, we are absolutely ready to do that. In fact, the, the meeting and the first meeting of March, we thought that we would start rolling with facility master planning and EIR concurrently at the same time. So whether it's tonight or in two weeks, whenever the council gives the staff direction and identifies a preferred site, we will begin, we were absolutely prepared to begin to restart the facility master planning process and to start the EIR process, and to have both of those, which are the major issues, running concurrently. And we will continue, which we've already started, the property negotiation process if Tri-W is, is selected, and, and we're ready to, to do at the same time any other, any of the other tasks required to, to keep the project on the five-year timeline that will start when you, when you tell us what the preferred site is. Mike, could you note, there was a comment about the old project would only have cost 30 or 40 million dollars and we'd be done with it? Is that Mike or maybe Rob?
That was construction costs only. Didn't include the soft costs along, along with that. So there was, you know, probably a few more million dollars in there with soft costs. That was a property that we did own, started out as an original rehab of the existing plant and grew from there. So yes, and we have faced a few years of inflation since that time.
And was contingency built into that?
Contingency was included in there. Not in the $30 million costs, but in the overall project costs.
Okay. Any other things I missed, Mike? I think I got them.
I think you got them.
Mr. Mayor?
Okay, great. We can get on to discussion, and if there are any other additional questions at this point, we can do a combination of both. And I have a, I want to lead off with a couple of quick questions as well. a couple quick questions as well. So we talked briefly about the MOU with the Tri-W folks. And clearly, that may have been somewhat of a stumbling point with Rancho Calina until we got to the point where that didn't quite work out. So what assurances, we've already conveyed a message that negotiation with the owner and their representative is going well, and there's really not anything that's going to slow us down for that, which is a good thing, because we did experience some difficulty in coming to an MOU in the past. So can you talk about a timeline that we would get to an MOU, and then talk a little bit more about the fatal flaws that when we, in selecting the Tri-W site, what further analysis is going to raise its head for us? Because I think that's what I hear some of the questions from the audience tonight. And then, those are my first questions. If you can just respond to those quickly.
Sure, I'll start and let Mike fill in a couple. So our recommendation, should you believe that Tri-W is the way to go, which we recommend, is that you tell us that tonight. And then we will, as I just mentioned, we will start facility master planning, we will start the environmental process, and we will continue the MOU process. What we don't recommend we do is wait for 30 or 60 days until an MOU is complete. It'll take several weeks to get facility master planning and environmental back off the ground and moving again. It's been seven or eight months of pause on those, really since November. And so what we recommend is that there is a very small risk there, and that very small risk is that the MOU negotiations break down and Tri-W is not available. And we will have spent three to six weeks of facility master planning, environmental work. But we believe that risk is very low and recommend that we do all three of those at the same time. Right. And there are other ways of acquiring the property should the property owner, should MOU negotiations break down. We don't want to go that direction. We don't intend to go that direction, but that's always a failsafe that a governmental body has. I'm naturally optimistic, but I'm especially sitting here in June and wondering where we're going to build the WRF. I am cautious. Two months to have an MOU complete, maybe four weeks, but somewhere in that time period, I think we can have an MOU complete and have that, quote, "fatal flaw" pushed aside.
Okay.
Finally, we've had discussion about the fatal flaws question. And this is the question as we went through Righetti and Rancho Calina of the geotechnical, the hydraulic, hydro, the cultural, the possible issues that we wanted to identify if they were major, if they were a fatal flaw before we got into the process. There's been enough analysis out there already that we think it's a very low risk of any of those flaws being fatal. We don't even see the flaw, much less that it's fatal. So we think, believe that that's a very low risk. And what we recommend is essentially using the environmental process to identify that. So right up front, those things will be investigated. Again, I think it's extraordinarily low risk. We all do. It could be that we come back to you in six weeks and say, "We got a big problem culturally. There's a, there's some cultural reason that we can't build there." But again, there's been enough analysis done at that site, in that area, over the last several years, that we think that risk is very low, and weighing that against getting the project rolling. And on a timeline, we recommend that we just press on with it.
Okay, great.
Couple of low-cost things that we've already done, too, is we did have the biologist go out and walk it over as a rare plant survey, and look for any things that he could see that could require significant cost for mitigation. Given the site's location, the fact that it's not in, you know, a meandering, or near a meandering active creek like some of the Morro Creek locations, the soils' conditions, we would see less potential there for liquefaction, less potential for some of the things that we were concerned about with foundations at the other sites. And those ultimately, we didn't find any fatal flaws there either. So from a geotech perspective, we're going to mobilize the geotech immediately. So we'll have that information for the facility master plan, and those foundation costs can be applied. But that work would begin immediately. We have the scope work in hand, ready to go. So we'd start on those, as Dave said, as quickly as possible, the specific steps.
All right. Thanks. And then finally, so what's the risk in jeopardizing the EIR by removing the Righetti site from consideration while the folks that are before us are asking us to remove this? This body up here is weighing the responsibility of the whole community in risking a flawed EIR if it were. So, you know, I believe all of us are trying to be really responsible for the community as a whole and make sure this project is successful. So, you know, there's many questions and requests out here to remove Righetti. And I will say, you know, at the initial WRF CAC meeting, which I attended, and that request was made to the WRF CAC board, you know, my immediate thought was, you know, there's an EIR process for that. So I had my own concerns on that, and was, you know, and asked and wanted to validate what the process was. And so I really want to understand the risk factor in, does it bias the analysis of doing an EIR? I know folks are out here asking us to remove that. And it's not, in my view, that we are not listening. It's that we have to consider a successful project. And so maybe you can respond to that, please.
Unfortunately, I think that was directed at me, right?
Yeah, thank you. Or whomever.
Somebody else want to volunteer? Okay. My job as your legal counsel is to advise you as best I can as to legal risks. I would love to be a star and say, "You're legally required to step away from the Righetti site." I can't do that. I also can't say that I think it's totally safe to, at this point in the process, throw out any site as being a possible alternative to be added to the EIR. That process isn't going to help people sleep at night, but the process is what the process is. What you need to do is make sure that you create a record that is clear on what you're doing. The first step you have to take, which we haven't done yet, is actually pick the site that will be the project site that's analyzed in the EIR. So that's what we're asking tonight, actually, is before we can go any further, we need to know what the EIR is going to study. To do that, we need to have a project. The projects need to have a site in order to be able to put a project on. The facility master plan will be part of that determination of what the project is going to be once you pick the site. As part of the EIR process, once the determination is made as what the site's going to be, once there's some project described, there'll be what's called a scoping process. What's our process is, you send out a notice to the world that you're preparing an EIR, and you want people to come in and talk to you about what they think you should study in that EIR. One of the things that will be discussed is what alternative should be discussed. So, in my opinion, if you were to, today, say, any particular site is never going to be looked at as an alternative, and later on, someone brings up that idea to say, "Go look at this site," and you complete your EIR, and you didn't include that alternative site because you threw it out a long time ago, there's a risk that you have, you'd end up with an EIR, isn't whole, sound, and complete. It could be challenged, and if it's challenged, what you'll have to do is that the, what a court would do is they would send the EIR back to you to have to do more alternative analysis. And the timing risk of that is not worth it, in my legal opinion, to take that risk now, because you're not committing to any alternative site if you approve the project, the Tri-W site as the project site. You're not committing yourself to say you're going to include any particular cited alternative. That's not going to be decided until after the scoping meeting.
I'd add one thing and say that because the Righetti site has been one of our primary alternatives for, and was selected as one of those through a full public process, it's even more risky to remove that site without any compelling reason to do so, other than the passion of neighbors to that site.
So though the testimony of the audience and the neighbors involved in opposing that site is part of the record and analysis of an EIR and that site and the Righetti site location, is that right?
It won't actually be part of the EIR, because the EIR process hasn't started.
Okay.
But it's out there.
Okay. So when we get in, when we get to the EIR process, should council move forward with the Tri-W site without moving the Righetti site from the list, then we will want all this testimony, once again, to inform the EIR. Is that, would that be a fair statement?
It would be wonderful if the record of the scoping meeting included that information.
Okay. Those are all my questions. And if we can just kind of concentrate on questions right now, and then we can start with deliberation. Did you have questions? One more question, Christine?
Yeah, thanks. One quick one. About the property, the Righetti, $25,000 that was put down to secure the property so we could sort out whether or not that was an alternative to Rancho Calina, there was a deadline as to, that money is only good for so long. Could you remind us of how long that hold is on the property before it will be released, or before we have to make another payment?
Six months from the 29th of January.
June 26th.
26. So on the 26th of January, thank you, we entered the agreement and put down $25,000 to give us a six-month period to further, to do due diligence, essentially, on the site. And that's what we're in the middle of doing right now. If we want to extend our option to purchase for a further 400 days, then we need to pay a further $100,000 by the 26th of July. And that would extend the option for a further 400 days.
But staff has, but staff has no authority to spend that money. We'd have to come back here to get authority from you to spend that money.
And we have no intention of doing that or recommending that unless you identify the Righetti site as your preferred site. So should you identify Tri-W as the preferred site, then, Scott and I were talking about this today, then we will simply not make that $100,000 payment by the 26th of July, and the contract will be, the MOU will become null and void. And they actually have some interest in finding that out sooner than later. And there's a little negotiation going on of, should you choose to make Tri-W your preferred site tonight, then we're working with that property owner. Does that answer the question?
Great.
And just to confirm, in order for you to be able to extend that contract longer by paying the extra $100,000, you would have to come to the council at a meeting like this and ask us to approve that?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
And I would only do that if you really wanted me to.
Matt, questions?
Yeah, question.
Okay, thank you.
Joe, this is a question, follow-up on, you're talking about the scoping meeting and the EIR. And now is what Christine is talking about with this current hold on the Righetti property. If we do not have, continue that hold with another $100,000 for 400 days, and that property gets sold, what happens to the property then in terms of that scoping when we've looked at it and we've had it in this list, so when we do that EIR?
Because you're a governmental authority, and you have eminent domain power, which means you can go require someone to sell you property, as long as you're doing it affirm a value, the need to acquire a site doesn't make it infeasible, because you have authority to acquire it. So it doesn't, it wouldn't automatically end up, I wouldn't be able to tell you, once the MOU is done, you can knock that site off the alternative list, because we still have the same risks that I described earlier.
And two, another point there is, is you can, you could analyze a property or a site that's not necessarily for sale as part in your EIR. In other words, that property doesn't have to be available or on the market for you to analyze it as an alternative.
And when you talk about that scoping process, and I think we've talked about it at past meetings, when we talked about taking the Righetti property or any of the properties off this list, the scoping process is better with more than one property on the list? Or is there a desired number of properties?
The scoping process isn't focused on alternative sites. The scoping process is focused on the project site and getting the public to inform you of what their concerns are. One of the things the EIR has to include is alternative sites and alternative projects on the site that you select. Because of that, and because the public now knows, because you've done a lot of work already in coming up with several sites that could be alternative sites, getting public comment on those alternative sites will be helpful in being able to then, for you to, at that point in time, decide, you, staff, the EIR consultant in time, to decide which of those sites should be included in the alternative site analysis in the IR. All the sites that you currently have are not going to be listed as alternative sites in that EIR. They don't need to be, and they're not going to be.
Okay. So with that in mind, then, it would be beneficial to have, it could be beneficial to keep the Righetti in that scoping process when it comes time to do that in terms of that public outreach?
In terms of having a very clear legal record that you didn't make a
A rash decision.
Or a too-early decision.
And so in terms of this public outreach, and we have folks who are showing up repeatedly to the WRF CAC meetings and whatnot, when that comes time, keeping this property on would become beneficial to moving the process forward. That's what you're saying?
Or I think the more accurate way to put it is not taking anything off until we get to the scoping is, I mean, there's no, is important for us to use the public process to narrow those alternatives.
And then, but likewise, that public process, a bit later in that scoping process, by not taking it off now, would help that process along when it comes time to do that?
Yeah.
It'll make me, from a legal perspective, more comfortable.
Because we've, doing it in a more complete and vetted manner?
Correct.
Okay.
Process-wise.
Sure.
We didn't throw it out before, before the, it was time in the process.
So knowing that the opposition exists now, will exist at a future date, understanding that those fatal flaws and/or the legal challenges to that, those things still, those aren't necessarily part of this process then, of the scoping process. Those exist outside. And in terms of the scoping process, in terms of vetting a Tri-W site, they're kind of separate from each other. site, they're, they're kind of separate from each other.
When, when the, when the notice of, the NOP, the notice of preparation goes out, which is the document that needs to be sent out when the, for the scoping meeting, when that notice goes out, I'm sure that all of the people who have shown interest in this project to date are going to be aware of that, either because they're going to get noticed themselves, or they're going to understand that that's going on. And I would hope that those people would come to that scoping meeting and give the information about the concerns they have about all the alternatives that are out there.
I just want to make a little subtle correction. I, I think I understood what you said when this would make you comfortable that we go through the scoping project in reference to the EIR, but it, more to the point, it's going to make the project successful by going through the scoping process and all of that. I think maybe that's probably more accurate.
Thank you for that. I meant from a legal perspective, as your attorney, I would feel more comfortable being able to advise you, that's a better process to follow.
Okay, thanks. Questions, Noah?
Yes, I just want to see about staff's ability to bring back, after the next WRFCAC meeting, and then to the council, basically a focused schedule that outlines the NOP process, the anticipated next workshops, and some of these details that we've talked about a little earlier, so that everyone can wrap their heads around just where exactly they're going to be tapping into these discussions, and we're going to be able to get more detailed. So I'm wondering if that, if you think that'd be possible in the next, in the next month?
Definitely. We could definitely do that. What we'd like to do is bring it to WRFCAC first, get their input, and then we can bring it to the council.
Great, thank you.
Yes, I just want to be careful in committing right now to a month because we have a council meeting break, the second meeting in July. So absolutely by the first meeting in August, we will shoot for the first meeting in July, but if there's some friction in there, I just want to be careful about that. And Mayor Irons and I will work through the council agenda as we always do and, and get it to you at the right time.
Perfect. I think, I think everyone's going to appreciate being able to look at that. Another quick item that was discussed during public comment was the idea of savings, operational and construction savings for a project that would likely be smaller without Cayucus. And we have talked considerably about that, but I think it's an important item to confirm that there are savings based on us working separately.
Absolutely. I actually took the same note twice, that's why I got tripped up. Instead of taking that note, I knew there was another thing to address. So your guidance to us last May was to do facility master planning for a project that could include Cayucus. And then we owed you a point in time at which we would have to make a decision whether we were going to build a project for Morro Bay plus Cayucus or just Morro Bay. When we bring the timeline back to you, we will identify as closely as we can what month that is, but it's, so we still need to get through, we got four or five months of facility master planning to do. It's some point after that, but before construction documents really start, we move forward with those.
In our scope of work for the facility master plan, the assumption is that the, the project will be a Morro Bay only project, but we will look at the costs operationally and capital for partnering with Cayucus as an alternative. And that will be in the master plan as an appendix most likely, but the master plan itself will be focused on a Morro Bay only project, will present with Cayucus as an alternative.
Mr. Henning, questions?
Mr. Nunley, Mr. Martoni seemed to have a different opinion about the Damagini Dairy area, and I wondered if you might address his comments about his sense that egg zoning may not be restricted under Measure D and/or Mr. Buckingham, whoever may be most appropriate. And also, it might be a better option because it follows the Whale Rock easement and the city easement. So I, I mean, he seemed to be of the opinion that, again, that that might be superior, and that, the reason I bring it up is because that was a recommendation and a concern of the two ranchers in close proximity to the county property. So if you could just elaborate a bit and comment on that, I'd appreciate it.
Sure, I'd be glad to. So first, I'd like to speak to the Whale Rock easement. And we show that, let's see, running, it's the blue dashed line, the shaky dots bouncing all over. The ability to use that for a raw wastewater pipeline, probably not likely. That's a regional water supply pipeline for City San Luis Obispo and other agencies. There are regulatory requirements for clearance from between water mains and raw sewage. So that would be, it would be doubtful that we would get approvals to be able to do that from the city. I know similar to the state water pipeline. The second is the locations that Mr. Martoni identified. You know, the Dairy site, I believe, is over in this general area. The concerns we have really aren't zoning so much as we're constrained by the PG&E transmission line easement to the back of the property. We're constrained by coastal streams, we're constrained by, or not constrained, but we would be highly visible if we tried to use 10 acres in that parcel, because there's only a couple of acres that'll really fit behind that knoll. And then we also are, you know, the proximity to that neighborhood is similar to what we have at, at the Rigetti property. So those are the reasons that we have recommended the county parcel. It's really the ability to, for the natural screening of that relatively large knoll, it's the, the fact that we have the flexibility of the space there, and really the, the distance, you know, you're, it's what, roughly six tenths of a mile from the nearest residents beyond, and I don't want to minimize Casa de Flores, but our understanding, the meeting we had with them and discussions we've had with their management, is their concerns are really not, they're really not, not significantly concerned about it.
The only other question I had real quickly is, what might the cost be for doing the Cayucus portion of the master plan? The addendum, as you referred to it as?
We don't have it broken out as a separate item in the facility master plan. Once you've developed kind of the base materials and you've looked at potentially a 25% customer as an adder, you know, the level of effort for that is, you know, I'm looking at Matt Thomas, but my estimation is you're probably in the $10,000 to $20,000 range for that analysis, because you've already developed all your base information for the single agency. So it's really not a significant, and it's already scoped in the facility master plan.
Thank you.
Sure.
Okay, great. Thanks for adding all those questions. And as we get into discussion and deliberation, I'll just open up with some, some remarks and turn it over to the rest of council and finalize with some remarks as well. First of all, I appreciate everybody's work moving forward. Our WRFCAC has done some great work for us as well. I appreciate the explanations on our advisory body roles and some descriptions of analysis on some of the fatal flaw memo that was transpiring and circulating throughout the neighborhoods and everything. I support the Tri-W site. I think that's, overall, we need to build a WRF. And so for me, the focus on, on a water reclamation facility, regardless of our list of goals, you know, we went into this at the very beginning with public outreach, public workshop, to identify what are the guiding principles, and all those goals were there to, to rate the different sites that we chose. So it's been a process getting here. And part of the process was our constituents and our community coming out and vocalizing and educating us on, on the concerns as well, and, and maybe heightening some of the rankings, I think, that, that we may have started out with. But it is a process, and the process is working. I understand the concerns for removing the Rigetti site. The initial question that I asked about risking this project, the project overall by removing that, it's a decision we have to make, and my decision, at least at this point with council, would be to keep the Rigetti site on. For the purpose of having a successful EIR to build a WRF, the hope would be at the Tri-W part, the Tri-W site, we have done a lot of work on this, but it is, you know, as I said, it is part of the process. And moving forward with the work that's been done, we definitely have to, when we get to the facilities master planning, we had some concerns on single use in that area. We have to get this built. We are on a schedule and a timeline, and if some of the ancillary goals that may be on our, our list need to be dropped off, then in my opinion, so be it. Our, our primary focus should be the WRF. Certainly, some of the other items that were, have been listed on our goals have been part of the community desires when we first initialized our, our goals, but primarily, we need to, to build a WRF. So I'll close with some, some remarks as well, but I do support the Tri-W site. You know, it's unfortunate, I know many of you here today are requesting that we remove the Rigetti site. I'm, I'm appreciative of that. I'm appreciative of our legal counsel and our staff guiding us through here. We will, as explained, when we get to a scoping process, ask for your comments to support that EIR and that scoping document so we can focus once again on what I would hope to be the WR, a future WRF site at the Tri-W site. So those are my opening remarks, and I'll look to Matt if you want to continue the remarks, and then we'll-
Sure. Going through all of this, and the, I'm definitely in favor of going with the Tri-W South Bay property and moving ahead with that, and going through the EIR process. Joe, you've explained the, the scoping process and keeping the Rigetti property on there. I think you've explained, explained it to the point that this is a comparison as it goes through this EIR process. And this process, and where there's suitable amounts of people who are opposed to the Rigetti process, they will help then in that scoping process to move ahead with the Tri-W property. So I think listening to residents who are against the Rigetti property, this is actually can be viewed as a positive, because if something happened to the Tri-W property and all of a sudden someone would say, "Hey, the Rigetti property," we already know that there's going to be suitable opposition to that property. But however, moving ahead with that property in light of the Tri-W property, it could be helpful for that larger property. So with that in mind, I'm, I'm ready for the, move ahead with Tri-W.
Thanks, Christine.
Thanks to everyone who's participated in the process. I know that it's something that you didn't expect to do, but I know I probably didn't expect to get this involved in my city government either, and it's, it's rewarding when you are heard, and I believe you have been heard. And I also am going to suggest that we proceed to planning and permitting with the South Bay Boulevard site, formerly known as Tri-W County site. My one concern about that is, in terms of facility master plan, is that we are looking at a site that will be there, any facility will be there for the next 50-plus years. So what I wouldn't want to do is retain too small of a footprint where, you know, in the, say, 25 years, the city is expected to go back and add something for future function or water delivery, or something that we can't foresee in the drought condition we're in now. So I would just keep that in mind, that at some point, if we need to add some kind of function, that we would have the space to do so. That was a concern of mine for Rancho Colina, that we were just really hemmed in with that, with the acreage available to us there. So I would just like us to be very aware of what we may need to do sometime in the future. I also would approve the amendment to the agreement with Black and Beach. There's no way around extending that contract. I think they've done great work for us all the way along, and it's really our delay that have caused them to come back and say that they need to amend the agreement. It was nothing on their part, they've done great work and been deliverable, as we would have expected them to. You also, Mr. Nunley, read then three, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven other points that would happen beyond, we're not specifically approving them tonight because we only asked for those two, but I am just making note that you did give us, number three that you said is, and I would definitely direct, and I'm sure the council would agree, to please continue to coordinate very closely with the ranchers and the property owners there. They bring up fantastic concerns, maybe fantastic isn't the right word for concern, but very clear, legitimate and thoughtful concerns, and I really appreciate them coming forward at this time and doing so, and then trying to de-emotionalize the process as much as possible. I understand how they would feel about if we decided to absolutely not go to the South Bay Boulevard site, but I appreciate them coming in logically and being very clear on a way that they can work together with us to ensure that mitigation is, is built into the project from the very beginning. So working with them directly, I would definitely agree that we need to direct staff to do that. The other studies you've talked about were the topography, the finalizing, the salinity study, master reclamation plan, EIR scoping, and continue environmental studies. So just wanted to put those in the record, that those are the things we will see as soon as we move forward after tonight. Another thing on moving forward, asking people to come back out again and rehash what they feel they've already rehashed over and over again. What you, thanks to our city clerk's efforts with agenda correspondence, if you go back through our city website on any of our past meetings, all of the agenda correspondence is there. So everything you've ever sent us that has appeared in agenda correspondence is already part of our official legal record, and it's there for you to see as well. And that you can, you know, you can simply just print out what you've already written and include it into that, but it's already in the city legally, as well as every single one of your public comments through our YouTube channel and all of our minutes. So nothing will be lost, and it's, it's basically all recoverable, as long as you made it for the deadline for agenda correspondence, it's all there. So that's something that we wouldn't have been able to do for you a year ago, but thanks to our city clerk, getting that process in place, we are able to do that now, and you can see really how important it is. Because if we're asking you to bring it back again one more time through the scoping process, you know, hopefully, if, even if you didn't save it at home on your, on your computers, I'm sure most of you did, but there would be a record to make sure it's, it's included. Lastly, I think mentioning that simply the fact that we, our option on Rigetti will expire in a month, and there's no interest in renewing that, therefore, it's a de facto removal of the property from our consideration to actively purchase the property. So it's another month until we no longer have any right to acquire the property. So if you're wondering how much longer, you'll have to deal with the fact that will it or will it not be Rigetti. If we're not purchasing it, then it won't be Rigetti at this point. So, you know, I think that that's something, anything can happen in any process, but I think that we were able to have a lot of advanced information about the Tri-W property. It has been considered, as long as the Rigetti property and the Rancho Colina property for the past three or four years. So we have baseline information on that property, and I think that we've worked through a lot of the neighborhood compatibility issues that we have emerged through the Rigetti site. And this evening, we have a different set of neighborhood concerns that we're going to work through as well. So at this point, I hopefully, even though you don't agree, some of you, you do understand exactly why the council is moving forward identifying one site, the South Bay Boulevard site, as the preferred site, moving forward into planning and permitting and moving, and leaving it at that. So we're also not removing the Rancho Colina property, which is still as viable perhaps as the Rigetti property that's sitting there as well. So I hope you understand why we've decided, I think perhaps we will decide, at least my decision, would be to just move forward with one site. And if, you know- And if, you know, I think legally, we're opening ourselves up to litigation that wouldn't make me comfortable either, if we try to engineer the EIR process any more than we need to. At this point, I think that would be all that I, that's all that we're asked to do this evening. Lastly, I want to close and compliment the WRF CAC. They don't have the benefit at their meetings of having legal counsel there to advise them on a motion they may make or some other decision. I do recall that the meeting where they did make the motion to remove Rigetti, that wasn't part of the staff report that they received, it wasn't, came up very organically, and I think I understand why they would feel that they'd want to do that. I absolutely understand from their position how that was the right response to that meeting for them. And they had no idea, I'm sure when they made that motion and they passed that motion, that there would be anything wrong with that at that point. I don't think there's anything wrong with it. I think it just puts us a little bit more at risk. Hopefully, again, that you understood and can see that at least, even if you disagree from the legal analysis that we received tonight. So moving forward, that's it for me. Thanks.
Thanks, Christine. John?
Thank you all for your input, your emails, and again, your emotion and concern is noted. I too agree with staff's recommendation to proceed with the TriW site as the preferred WRF site for planning and permitting. I also agree and approve, would approve the amendment for Black and Beach to increase by $115, $595, $1,595. And I want to say a couple of things. You know, we represent the full community. You are extremely important to us, but it's the community that we're elected to represent. And several occasions, we have asked over and over the question, so that it could be aired, why the Rigetti property cannot or should not be removed at present. And once again, that was asked and explained in detail tonight, and the bottom line is, it presents a significant risk to the community that we cannot afford to take. Not that we don't like you and we want to punish you by keeping you in suspense with regard to that property. It is a risk issue. We hire attorneys, fortunately or unfortunately, to advise us on these issues. And we are not experts in the law, and we have to use our best judgment with the advice given to us by legal counsel. And so, bottom line, it's a risk issue. I would want to say this, time is money. We've said it many times. I think Mr. Nunley said about $150,000 a month. That's, my calculation is exactly the same. We need to move expeditiously to get the MOU. I know it's been said, but I'll say it again, that the sooner we can get that, the better. I would like staff to work very closely with the ranchers in the area. I think they do some unique things that are important, and I wouldn't want to disturb that, I would not want to disturb that, as much as possible because of the unique nature of that and the longevity, and also, I think, the positive attitude that you come to us with. And so, my suggestion is that you not only reach out to them and work closely with them, but also the other neighbors, as I believe has been discussed in the area, including those that I mentioned in the two emails that I spoke about across Highway One. The other thing I would say is that with regard to the other issues that we had as goals, those were goals that were set a long time ago and certainly can be looked at and revised, and I think as part of the process, we should do that in a timely fashion as we get more information. With regard to Cayucus, you know, Cayucus has made a decision, in essence, and said which way they want to go. And we just need to move on and get over that, and that's what we're doing. However, we're spending a small amount of money to look at the feasibility, should there be a decision to come back at some time in the future. And so I think that's prudent, and we should continue with that. So in summary, thank you for coming out again. This is not anything that is based upon us not wanting to work with you, not hearing your concerns. Once again, I think, I know I responded to a ton of emails today, as I have in the past and will continue to do, but we will need you again to come out during the EIR process. And as Ms. Johnson has said, everything that you've said is available kindly online if you want to pick that up. So thank you.
Thanks, John. Noah?
Yes, thank you. I will also agree with the TriW site as the preferred option, the South Bay TriW site. And I'm looking forward to getting into further details on the rest of the discussion and being able to keep this project moving. We know not only the cost of delay, but that there is a requirement from our regulators in the Regional Water Quality Control Board to finish this project in a timely manner. And our current timeline, as we move forward tonight, will, it puts us in a position to be able to do that. So we need to keep that in mind and stay focused on this. Couple of quick things related to why to not remove Rigetti or to start, to tinker with an open process. And I'll just relate back a little bit to my experience, both observing and then participating with the old project, where the original proposal was a renovation of our existing wastewater treatment plant on the coast, which I was in support of. And that quickly changed during the fatal flaws analysis, when we recognized the tsunami and flood issues of that site. And unfortunately, back then, the council decided to ignore the multiple, many voices of public concern about that, voices from the regulators, whose letters are on record saying that we are pursuing a fatally flawed site, and also decided to not pursue an authentic options analysis. So I feel like what we've done is kind of flipped that on its head and really worked hard to look at alternatives and be responsive to community concerns. And I think, in the end, that's going to result in a permit and a project that we can actually implement. So when I hear numbers being thrown around about an old project, those are make-believe because they were never actually permitted. That was not going to be a project that was deliverable. And so when we talk about the potential of building a plant down there in the tsunami zone, and yeah, if a tsunami happens, our bigger concern is what's going on with the community and the high school. I agree with that, but we all need to recognize, as Mary Jo D'Seo did earlier, the importance of this facility, because it's the one facility in our community where if it is broken or goes offline, our entire town shuts down. There's nothing that we can do in our community without a properly operating wastewater treatment plant. And thankfully, what we're doing in this process is developing a water reclamation component to that, which to me is a great investment in our future, because it's part of the water portfolio that we know we're going to depend on, and therefore, I think it is a solid investment for us. So I'm just going to end there and look forward to getting more into the details and us all learning and helping to confirm the priorities and deliver something that we can be proud of in the future.
Okay, great. Appreciate everybody's comments. Some of the comments have led to some additions, and I appreciate that. The selection of the TriW site, I think, maybe some discussion on the focus to the nearest site. We said TriW, but there's two there, and we've taken information on that. And I think the site that's nearest Highway One, unless we have to have more discussion on that, I think we've had testimony on which one of those is the most preferred of the two. And I think, I just want to voice, vocalize right now, that the site nearest Highway One would be the most preferable site for the obvious reasons that we've discussed. And if anybody else wants to make more additional comments on that, I'd welcome those. And Councilmember Johnson added something that I want to add on as well. The focus on a WRF, a water reclamation facility, is the most important. And we discussed about maybe the ancillary goals on there, but I agree, the site must be adaptable and expandable. We have to be able, in 50 years from now, we can't say, now what do we do? We have to have a site that is adaptable and expandable. And if that means reducing some of these ancillary components that may be on the list, then we need to focus on the WRF. So unless somebody wants to make some more additional comments on one site over the other, I'd welcome those, unless there's consensus for that direction?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, good. With that, I'd take a motion, or make a motion at that matter. I would move staff recommendation and direct, staff recommendation to direct staff to proceed with the TriW South Bay Boulevard site, the specific site listed, the southernmost, towards the Highway One, as the preferred WRF site for planning and permitting. And to approve the amendment, one, for agreement with Black and Beach Corporation for development of facility master plan, requesting budget increase $100,000 to $116,595, increasing the contract amount to $826,000 and $718,000. That's the motion.
Second.
We have a motion by Mayor Ires, a second by Councilmember Smucker. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? None? Motion carries. Thanks very much. Can we take a short recess? And I, maybe just a real quick discussion. We do, I'd like to finish the items we have on the agenda. Can we get, you know, do we have consensus to work through the last couple of items and get through those from council?
I can do it.
We have, we can get, we can get done by 11:20, 11:30 outside.
What if we made an agreement not to go past 11:30?
All right.
Why don't we give ourselves an end date, and staff knows that too, and we'll just work through it?
Right. We'll go to 11:30.
And maybe we could just get started now on one of the ones, then take a break once everyone's cleared?
All right.
Or is that, you want to take a break now? I don't, oh, okay. Well, maybe we should just go as we need to go during the presentation and then...
Sure. We'll let them clear out. We'll take a three-minute recess, and we'll come back in three minutes. All right, we'll be right back. Thanks. Okay, thank you. I'll do that one more time. Thank you. Hi, we're back. I'll make a motion to extend our meeting beyond 11 o'clock, and I need a second.
Second.
We have a second by Councilmember Johnson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries for one. Okay. With that, we'll move on. So we've had, we have some folks waiting out here. We have, I just want to touch bases. We have someone that's been waiting here for item B2, so the urgency ordinance, and staff can help us on the other list of items that will be required to get through tonight. Maybe you can help us with that.
I know I have a nine o'clock call with the Coast Guard tomorrow morning.
Okay.
So that item is sort of, we'd like to get through that one. Urban Water Management Plan, Damaris is here, what's the criticality? That actually has to be done tonight. This was noticed as a public hearing 90 days ago. So have to do B1.
Okay.
Urgency ordinance, you have somebody here for...
Is there anybody else for item B1? We've had some, or B, so we have, who's here for B1 and B2?
I'm here for B2.
B2? B2, okay. Can we bump up B2? Yeah, thanks. All right, thanks, thanks, sorry about that. So moving on to item B2, sorry, Damaris, we'll get right through this. We've had people waiting on that.
You can sit there, though.
Sorry. So, so with that, item B2 is adoption of Urgency Ordinance Number 604, approving a 45-day moratorium, limiting the number of vacation rentals in the city. And we'll turn that over to, is that Mr. Livick on that, or Mr., oh, no, we have Mr. Graham on that.
Oh, no, it's just, the light doesn't work. All right. Just give me one second.
All right, thank you, Mayor Ires, members of the council. You have before you this evening an urgency ordinance to place a moratorium on the approval of additional vacation rentals in the city. At your May 24, 2016 city council meeting, the council reviewed the city's current vacation rental policies that are found in Chapter 5.47 of the municipal code, and eventually determined that the current regulations do not adequately protect our residential neighborhoods from the negative impacts of the proliferation of vacation rentals. The council provided direction to do two things. First was to bring back an ordinance to put in place a moratorium, limiting, with a total limit of 250 vacation rentals. You'll recall that as part of that, as part of that last meeting, as part of the presentation that I provided, that at that time, we had about 174 vacation rentals in operation, and we'd had information that there was at least, was probably up to about 250, and so the council placed the cap at 250. And then the second point of the direction provided by council at that meeting was to update the city's vacation rental policies as part of the general plan and LCP update process, and to include regulations in that process that would address items like parking, location, overall number, distances between rentals, and maybe the number of occupants that could occupy any vacation rentals. A little bit about the moratorium process. The council can, by a four-fifths vote, adopt the urgency ordinance before you this evening, and that would implement a 45-day moratorium on vacation rentals, again, capped at 250. You can also extend that. So during the 45-day moratorium, council may hold a second notice hearing, and with a second four-fifths vote, extend the moratorium for up to 22 months and 15 days. As part of that second hearing to extend, there's a requirement that the council approve a report that details the measures that are taken to alleviate the condition that led to the adoption of the initial 45-day moratorium. In looking through our calendar, we've tentatively scheduled that, that extension of the moratorium for your July 12, 2016 meeting. And lastly, as it relates to moratoriums, 10 days prior to the expiration of the second extension, the council is required to, again, adopt a written report that describes measures taken to alleviate the condition which led to the adoption of the ordinance. In this instance, hopefully, that would be an entirely new ordinance in the form of our, it would be incorporated into our zoning code at that point, and that would likely take place around May 22 of 2018. So staff's recommendation at this point is to adopt urgency ordinance 604, implementing a 45-day moratorium on the issues of vacation rentals and placing a cap at 250 total. This will also allow the staff to bring back an extension to that moratorium and to add as much as 22 months and 15 days to that. With that, if there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thanks, Mr. Graham. Any questions for Matt? Matt, go ahead.
Yes, Scott, I do have, in terms of identifying those additional units, could you explain what sort of process that is? We have 174 in the books now. We have 174 in the books now.
Well, we had 174, word got out about the moratorium, and we've probably gotten 20 applications over the last two weeks. So those are being brought, those are increasing fairly quickly. Also, we're in the process of looking over a contract with a company called iCompass, where we would identify unregistered vacation rentals, and send notice to those that they need to be registered, and it would be kind of a first-come, first-serve thing, you know, we would take the first, say, "We're almost at about 200 now," so the first 50, and then anybody over that would be, would be out of luck until we, until we adopted a new ordinance. So, yeah, we are in the process of doing that, you know, currently.
Thanks, Christine.
My question was about outreach as well, I don't know if there's any additional outreach that we've done, or is it just word of mouth already moving through?
So independently, we haven't done any additional outreach on this, it is word of mouth, and it seems to, you know, have been fairly, spread fairly quickly, because again, over the last two weeks, you've received 20, and normally, you know, we get maybe one a week, if that, so the word is out there that we're doing this, and it's going along through the property management company folks, at least.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, John, Noah?
Yes, so thank you, we are communicating to licensees that there's no guarantees about, you know, what, how this ordinance will look like, and their rights to that license in the future, really, it depends on what the community comes up with and is approved by a council at that point, am I correct on that?
That would be the conversation, had anybody called and asked about it. I haven't spoken with anybody, nor has, nor has other, other staff spoken to any of the vacation rental management folks about that, but that's clearly the case, we're going to adopt an ordinance, and then the expectation is that everybody's going to be required to follow it, whatever that may be, so, we don't know if we've developed it yet.
I guess, just wanted to get at the concern that there might be an expectation that once they have a license, they'll always have a license, and what I think we talked about the last meeting was that we need time to go through and come up with a comprehensive plan, and we don't know what that plan is yet, so...
The ordinance, the ordinance may have policies, the grandfather, all the ones that are out there in it, I mean, I don't know what we're going to have, or it may not, it may simply say, "Nope, you have to comply with our new requirements as soon as we put them in place," and that's the requirement, so, yeah, I mean, that's what, that's what I would tell anybody.
And as Scott mentioned, presuming we do this outreach based on getting some addresses and from iCompass, we'll include that in the letter. What, we intend to be a friendly letter that says, "Hey, we understand you might have a vacation rental, if you do, there's a moratorium, and you want to come in pretty quick and get licensed so that you come in under the moratorium." We'll also either include or include reference to the ordinance, which specifically says that in that outreach.
The information will be placed on the website as well.
Okay.
We just haven't had an opportunity to do that yet.
Last quick question, are you noticing the licensees, the new ones that came in, does it tend to be larger property management organizations or businesses, or are you seeing some, some smaller individual licensees that are also getting notice of this?
From what I can tell, it's all of the above. It seems to be some of the, you know, the ones that manage several properties are aware of it, and then also individuals, just depends, I mean, again, the word's kind of spread out there, you know, it's not a real large city, so it's not really all that surprising.
I think that is good news, because I've heard from some people that there's a concern that the more savvy, more tuned-in property management companies will gobble up this cap, and the smaller individual that's mostly just focused on their day-to-day life, and this is kind of a side thing that's a bonus for them, may not notice or be aware, so it's good to hear that you were getting the mix there.
And we're moving quickly to engage iCompass so we can get that information right away, I think, just so that doesn't happen, so we can, so everybody has an even playing field, and we'll be sending that notice out to all those folks as soon as we get the list, basically. We're not going to, we're not going to delay that, you know, basically for that reason.
Okay, great, thanks.
Great, Christine, one more question?
One quick question, I know that a lot of, what I'm seeing just locally is that the advertising is going out, that you can use this, for homes being listed for sale, there's often a bullet that says you can also rent this out as a vacation rental. I would assume that as soon as we pass this tonight, maybe we could send a letter to the scenic coast realtors in some way, letting them know that this is happening, and I mean, we really, what can we do, people can say whatever they want, you know, really, I guess, but we'd like to at least be on record that, hey, we communicated to your governing body and your communicate, you know, they needed to communicate to you, I guess, probably also the chamber, whomever, you know, would be responsible for sharing the word with local realtors.
I had planned on kind of working through that, so we could get the word out to as many of those folks as possible, because that was something that was brought up with the, at the last council meeting where we discussed this, this is that, that is something that's, that's, you know, part of some of the sale brochures that are out there that say, "Hey, you buy the house, and to pay for it, you can rent it out as a vacation rental," that may not be the case, so.
All right, thanks, I'll open for public comment, first public comment is Nancy Hare.
Nancy, can you answer my question?
Okay. Bill Martoni, I don't see Bill Martoni, Barbara Door, I see you. And then Bob Keller.
Barbara Door, resident of Morro Bay, homeowner since '93, when we needed to, not when we weren't using our little vacation house, and we rented it out as a full-time rental to very nice people who became nice part, participants in the community. But before I even go on vacation rentals, we had occasion to have the paramedics come out to our house, I believe Sunday, whatever day it was, and I just want to say that it wasn't, it didn't end up an emergency, squirting blood was not death, but they were wonderful, helpful, and were very, very lucky in Morro Beach to have the outstanding services we do, and I just want to mention that to all of you, and a very special thank you to them, and everybody's doing well. And I believe the vacation rental issue is under the Realtor Disclosure Laws, that they do have to say if there are laws in the community. I urge you to adopt the ordinance, I think it's critical, and I've sent you enough correspondence, based on a lot of the research and reading I've been doing. I do hope you could lower your 250 limit down to, closer to the 177 or 74 that were legal. I don't, I know we want the TOT, the taxes, but I think our neighborhoods are more important than that. These people didn't care about doing their jobs, renting their homes out legally, they didn't care about being a good neighbor, and I'm not sure we should care so much that they get covered and protected. And I suggest that you can, as a compromise, approve of vacation rentals for shared housing, where somebody has a spare room, so they're living with that person when they stay, and they're making sure everything is safe and sound and compatible with the neighborhood. Or limit it to your mixed-use areas, commercial areas, visitor-serving land use districts, because you already have a mix of motel, tourist-serving facilities there, which would be, I think, a great use. And I know you got the information on Laguna Beach, they're twice our population, twice the number of dwellings, yet we have 4% of our homes as vacation rentals, and they have the same amount, so theirs was 2%. So we certainly have a very serious problem, and they have proceeded with their moratorium, which will end in October of this year. Care about the neighbors and our neighborhoods and our community, and getting jobs for the people who want to live here, so they can find a place to live and rent if they're not buying it, escalates the prices of housing, that's much more important than the transient occupancy taxes you'd be getting. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob Keller.
First of all, can you hear me? Vacation rentals, question, how are they monitored? And also, what happened to our zoning laws? We, I live in R1 resident area, but we have multiple units that they rent out, like they call them suites, suite A, B, C, and D, you know? And also, some places are side-by-side, and they're daily rentals. Also, do they have to have their signs posted in their residence? Some, I don't even see signs. And also, parking is a problem. They have their people come in, and they park their cars elsewhere in our areas where we can't park our cars, and I have company, they don't know where to park. Also, some streets are so cluttered that you can't get two cars going each way, you can only go one way, and it's a safety hazard. So anyway, and also, talk to people that want to work here, and families, young people, they can't even find a rental. Rentals are escalating, and I think they're averaging like $2,500 a month for just this average person, average house. And inspections, I just wonder how they're inspected and for compliance. Anyway, I don't, I, for one thing, I think these things should put, be put, like Barbara says, in an area where it's commercial, or R1, or R2, or R3, but not in a residential area, because they have to have a business license, and I thought business license would belong in commercial areas, not residential areas. And that's, and also, the internet is really terrible, because everybody goes on the internet to advertise their units, and it's escalate, it's out of control, and I like to have it, like they say, stop at 177 if possible, thank you.
Thanks, Bob. That'll conclude our public comment, I'll bring it back for discussion. At this point, the recommendation is for, staff recommends the city council adopt urgency ordinance number 604 by number and title, with further reading waived, approving a citywide 45-day moratorium with, where no permits, licenses, approvals may be issued or applications accepted for operation of more than 250 vacation rentals. That's the recommendation. Any further discussion on this item? I just will make one real quick, brief comment, it just came to my attention, not, the individual may not want to do public comment or say, but it's come to my attention that there are some, or at least one, that are, is using their house as a vacation rental, and then they go camping, so they, that is a way to offset their income to maintain their house. You know, they, they do a vacation rental, they can do that so many times a year, and they'll go camping while it's done, and then when they're done, they come down, and that's a way for them to subsidize their income in retirement to maintain their house, so I just think I need to, you know, that's, that needs to be recognized too, I was a little surprised, but as we think about vacation rentals, I hope we have a healthy discussion on how that moves forward, so I just want to put that out. With that, I'd move staff recommendation.
Mayor, we need to read the title, just technically, the title of the ordinance.
The title of the ordinance is Adopt, Adoption of Urgency Ordinance Number 604, Approving a 45-Day Moratorium Limiting, Limiting Number of Vacation Rentals in the City.
Actually, the title is An Urgency Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Morro Bay, California, Approving a Citywide 45 More, 45-Day Moratorium on the Issuance of Any New Permit, License, Approval, or Entitlement Pertaining to a Vacation Rental Within the City of Morro Bay, and Declaring the Urgency Thereof, and Then It Shall Take Effect Immediately.
So moved. Need a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second by Mr. Heading. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none, motion carries, thank you. Item B1, moving on to B1, thank you for everything, everything.
Thank you, Mike.
And then we'll move on to item B1, and with that, we'll move on to Ms. Damaris Hansen, thank you for your patience and waiting for all this.
We just have to switch a PowerPoint presentation. We have Damaris here, and we have Julia Arunda from M&amp;S Engineers, who helped us prepare our Urban Water Management Plan, and she'll be making that presentation, Damaris and I are here for questions on the Urban Water Management Plan.
Good evening, thanks for having me here, I know it's late, so I will get through this, I need to share information with you as part of complying with the Act, so we'll get through that, and then see if anyone has any comments. I appreciate the opportunity to work with staff on the Urban Water Management Plan, and to prepare this for the city, this is the agenda for today, I'll hit some highlights of the plan, it's up on the website right now, it should be considered a draft until you take action today to adopt it, and then it would be considered a final document. It sounds like a lot to go through, but I swear I'll go through it quickly. A little bit of background, the Water Conservation Act of 2009 is where this started, your water agencies are required to prepare these every five years on years ending in zero and five, so this is your plan for 2015. Since you serve more than 3,000 connections, you meet the criteria, and you're required to submit this. This actually is a requirement, if you want to apply for grants or loans from the state, they check the box and make sure that you completed this task. A couple new things this time, you're allowed to do either an individual or regional plan, because of your setting, it made sense to just do it as an individual plan. You also have the option to use fiscal year or calendar year data, so the city chose to use their calendar year. The requirement is that this needs to be uploaded to the Department of Water Resources' website by July 1, which is why you're having your hearing tonight, in case there's any final conference, we can incorporate them and get it finalized and uploaded in time. As far as regional coordination, we sent out letters to these agencies notifying them that the plan was being updated, and that there was a public hearing scheduled for tonight. There were also notices put out in the newspaper notifying the public, of the public hearing. Dang it. Some of the major tasks on the Urban Water Management Plan, it's meant to be a very high-level plan that looks at your supplies and demands, and makes sure that you're meeting your water conservation targets. It's not meant to be a master plan and show you what kind of facilities you need to build, you've already got your plate full with that, and you're doing plenty of studies and planning on that end. So we looked at population and water demand projections, they haven't changed much from the 2010 urban plan, we understand that you're going to be updating your general plan. We did base the water demand projections on, we'll go through this in the next chart, your 2015 usage was 95 gallons per capita per day, because of the drought, we felt that that was too low of a number to use going forward, so we bumped it up a little bit to 110 gallons per capita per day. You've had a very strong conservation program, but we expect that people might slack off in the years to come, if, if we get rain. So this is what the, some of the tables show, Department of Water Resources has standardized tables and a standardized template for this report, it's based on this guidebook that they put out, so I can't change the format of any of the tables, or really of the report itself, it's kind of a template that has to be followed. So these are some of the standard tables they have, your population projections out to the year 2040, it's basically less than 1% growth per year, it's, I think it's like half a percent, maybe, a year is projected. Then we look at the water demands associated with that projection, based again on that 110 gallons per capita per day. You show total water demand for 2015, it was 1,074 acre feet per year, if we project out to 2040 using the crystal ball that somebody said they had earlier, that might go out to a little over 2,000 acre feet a year. One of the other requirements is you look at the targets that were established in your 2010 Urban Water Management Plan for gallons per capita per day usage. In your 2010 plan, you established what those goals would be. For 2015, that's called the interim target, and for 2020, it's your confirmed target. And I will show how you've reached your target, basically, the table 5-1 at the, at the top shows your interim target for 2015 was 122 gallons per capita per day, and you were supposed to improve that by 2020 and get to 116. As I mentioned, in 2015, you're actually at 95, so you've well exceeded your target They also want to know what recycle water projects you might be having planned in the future, that's a big push statewide, you'll see a lot of more attention paid to recycle water projects. We know, we had two and a half hours already talking about that. So, some next step that you might take for expanding recycle water use are to do a market survey to identify if you have traditional recycle water customers for landscape irrigation, as well as evaluating the potential for groundwater recharge with recycle water from your new plant. And those will come out in the next year or two, but since they haven't been done, we don't really know what the potential is yet. Again, you know your mix of, your water supplies now is your imported water, your groundwater, recycle water will become a factor down the road, whether that's, again, for traditional irrigation use, or for indirect potable reuse for groundwater recharge remains to be seen. This table looks at your current and projected water supplies by category. So right now, you've got, as I mentioned, groundwater, surface water, and your decal water. water. By the time your plant comes online and you have a recycle water system available, we're projecting that won't really be till 2025 that it's implemented. So, that's where the, I'm sorry, that 650, push the right button here, acre-feet of recycle water will come into play. It's actually double-counted in these tables as a recycle water and groundwater, because you're putting it into the ground, and then you have to take it out again. So, you have to count it twice. That's why there's this big bump of 1,300 acre-feet between 2020 and 2025. They also want you to look at reliability of your water supplies during different scenarios, and compare them to an average year. We used 2010 as the base year, and this was the volume of water that you had available. In a single dry year, multiple dry years, you, you don't know that you're in a single dry year until a couple years out, and you realize like, wow, we haven't had any rain for the past few years. So, we kept that number steady. Then we looked at different scenarios for the second and third year of a multiple dry year, and you can see the assumptions we based that on there. Lower state water project available, and no water from the Chorau Basin, in kind of a worst-case scenario. Then you compare that to what your demands are, and ideally, you always have a positive number when you subtract the demand from the supply. That's what these scenarios show. There's no negative numbers in supply versus demand, and that is taking into account your recycle water supply as well. So, your next steps are to adopt the resolution that you have in front of you, number 45-16, which adopts the 2015 urban water management plan. If you have any final comments, we can get those incorporated into it before we upload it, and we will get them up to DWR through their website no later than July 1st. It is required that you provide copies of that to the, the three agencies that I mentioned within 30 days after adoption. And then, if your water supply or demand projections change significantly, which they may vary well before your next urban water management plan is actually due in 2020, you always have the option of updating it at any time and going through this, this same public process again. I understand you're going to have a one-water plan that you're working on, and when you complete that plan and your portfolio changes, you can certainly update your urban water management plan at that time and re-upload it to the state so that it's all current. And with that, if there's any questions, any other questions?
Thank you very much. We'll, we'll open it up for questions from council. I'll look to my left, Matt or Christine? None? To my right, John? Yes, thank you.
I was just curious why we didn't do it in 2002, or we did it and didn't turn it in? Just a curiosity. It says, "While the 2002 plan was never submitted to DWR for review, it served as the foundational document for 2005."
It wasn't required to be submitted in 2002, so the thinking was, if it wasn't required, we're not going to submit it at, at that point in time.
It became a requirement in 2005.
Yeah.
Okay. And just curious, what is the legislature going to do with this, once the data gets collated? Out of curiosity.
What they'll do is they'll, they'll upload, they, because they have standardized spreadsheets now, that all the agencies will upload, they will, it makes it a lot easier for them to compile all the data and then report on that. Like, throughout the state, there's going to be a million acre-feet of recycle water projects in the next 20 years, something like that. They're able to consolidate the data. They will review it, you might not hear from them for two years, because they're going to be reviewing a lot of these, but they will review it and make sure that it meets all their criteria, and, and send you a letter that it does.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
No questions? Thanks for that. We don't have any public comment questions or speaker slips at this point, so thank you very much for your patience in delivering the presentation. And unless there are any other questions, we'll go into discussion and/or a motion.
I would make a motion.
Okay. We'll entertain a motion.
To adopt resolution number 45-16, approving the 2015 urban water management plan.
Second.
We have a motion by council member Johnson, seconded by council member Heading. Any further discussion? Seeing, one question or a comment?
Yeah, I had the chance to send an email in to earlier staff, because I, reading the plan and understanding, water cannot be separated from energy within the state, and then here in Morro Bay, we know energy's going to play a key component in the reclamation system, as well as in the desal system. It's one of our limiting factors for affordability. So, my question was, should not we have a component here in the reliability section 7 that talks to energy and encourages, and forecasts additional work to add renewable energy systems to the city for stability and affordability? Staff's response to that was that this, this plan is not really the place for that, but that the one-water plan is, and so the suggestion from staff was to support the idea of folding energy into a component of the one-water plan, and I fully agree with that, and I just wanted to bring that up for everyone's attention.
Thanks for that comment. And with that, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None, motion carries. And before, thank you very much. And before we close out of this item, I just wanted to make note of the Free Water Audit Software Reporting Worksheet, probably something pretty interesting that we could use moving forward. I don't know if you checked that out, but I, I'd like to use, see us use that as a tool. Pretty cool. And with that, thank you. And with that, we'll move on to item C4. C4 is Consideration of Options and Direction for the New Coast Guard Station, Morro Bay Building, Harbor Department Office Building, and North T Public Restroom Building. And with that, I know we're firing up the presentation.
So, as Eric's getting that, that set up, this is a follow-on from a, boy, from several years of work, actually, that this has been going on, and we were able to meet in closed session and talk about negotiation a few, a few weeks ago. This came to the Harvard Advisory Board, but two weeks ago, Eric, with, with very strong support and recommendation for what the staff talked to the council through in our closed session a few weeks ago, and, and so now presented for you to consider in open session.
And that concludes my report. If you have any questions?
Yeah.
Do we want to wait for my people to show up? Okay, I'll quit. All right, so as Dave led in there, we've been dealing with this since about 2012, when the Coast Guard first came to us, that they had some money and they want to build a new building. So, our purpose here tonight is receive public input and city council input on the new Coast Guard Station proposal, and new Morro Bay Harbor Office Building proposal, and subsequent restroom proposal for relocating the Coast Guard Station, or adding additional building space for the Coast Guard Station that they proposed. We're also wishing to obtain city council approval of Option 1, which is a building location for the Coast Guard. That building concept is outlined and discussed subsequently. In coming up, there'll be a couple of slides that'll show Option 1 and Option 2. Then also, we'd like to obtain city council approval of the necessary follow-on steps, which we'll expand on later, and it's essentially authorizing staff to engage consultancy to begin design work, and approval of a budget expense amendment of about $100,000, authorizing to direct staff to begin concept and precise plan approval processes, authorizing direct staff to seek available loan and grant opportunities, and authorizing direct us to continue negotiations with the Coast Guard, which is, Dave said earlier, I think we got nine o'clock conference call with them to give them results of tonight, and hopefully go on to follow-on steps. Alternatives to the recommendation of our Option 1 is the U.S. Coast Guard builds, and Option 1, and I'll just lay it out there real quickly, is Coast Guard takes our current Harbor Office Department site and builds about 1,600 square feet there. We move over to the restroom site, which is between our building and Krill's Saltwater Taffy, and where the public restroom is, and we build a new office there and a new restroom there as well. So, that's Option 1. Option 2 is the Coast Guard builds on that restroom site. The city continues to use the existing Harbor Office, and a new restroom is built in a location TBD, because we don't have a location for it yet. And alternative 2 is for the Coast Guard, we don't have space for them to expand at this time, and none of us do anything. Fiscal impact of this, we've determined a new appropriately-sized Harbor Office and Public Restroom combo to cost about $1.1 million. That's from a estimate from Public Works that we did here a couple of months ago, that includes all site utilities, construction costs, engineering permitting, and a 30% contingency. So, we're pretty solid that that's a good estimate for a building that we believe will work for us. $300,000 of that cost will be paid upfront from the Coast Guard, because they're going to have to pay us for condemning our existing building, resulting in about $800,000, which we would bear as a loan over time, to pay for that construction cost. We seeking increased annual lease rent from the Coast Guard for the existing station and for the new building space, to help offset any new loan payments that we may incur, and hopefully we can get some relief from grant opportunities. And the Friends of the Harbor Department is actually starting potential fundraising efforts as well. So, Option 1 visuals are, with the shaky red dot, and maybe it won't be quite so shaky. Coast Guard builds on our Harbor Office location here. We move over here to next to the Krill's Saltwater Taffy building, and then we're basically up on stilts or up on a second level. Need that for two reasons. One, to put a public restroom down below on a ground floor, but two, to get good views of the harbor and bay, especially the harbor entrance for safety purposes for our patrol personnel and in the office. And Option 2, we stay where we are, in our humble abode. Coast Guard moves over to the site where the restroom is, and the, got it sort of listed as a placeholder here, a new water closet. Coast Guard indicated earlier, probably back in about 2013, that that wouldn't work for them, because they need the entire space, and from a safety and security standpoint, they didn't like having a restroom next to their building. So, the restroom location would move out somewhere, a location to be determined. As you may recall, back in 2013-ish, maybe 2014, we considered other possible locations for that restroom. We went to the Harbor Advisor Board, never really came out with any definitive, good go-to place for that. Background of this, I'll try and get through this quickly without reading it all. Coast Guard came in about $1.4 million back in 2012. Their existing station fulfills about one-quarter of their existing mission and staffing, or staffing housing needs. City approached, sitting in about 2013 to discuss options. We looked at several sites, Triangle Lot over north of the intake building, our building location, and others, and the only real viable ones were our Harbor Office Building, Option 1, and Option 2 over at the restroom site for them to build in. 2014, we went to the Coast Guard, or we went to the city council and got consent of landowner approval for them to build on the restroom site. The consent of landowner did leave some flexibility for other locations if they were available, as the Harbor Office site was being discussed at that time, but they were willing to move forward, at least on the restroom site. About a two-year lapse occurred between 2014 and early this year, for the Coast Guard to get up steam and get their act together and submit a couple of MOUs to us, which they did, early this year. Those MOUs were one for each location for the Coast Guard to possibly build on. And then, on June, we went to closed session a few times in the meantime, or the last couple of years, to get updates and direction on this. The last closed session, you directed us to go to the Harbor Advisor Board and take input there. They have considered it on June 2, and strongly announced, we recommended the Option 1 site, meaning Coast Guard moves to our Harbor Department site, and we move over to the restroom site. And the have also recommended we pursue a fair market rent from the Coast Guard to help offset the city's costs for our project. So, both the current Coast Guard Station and Harbor Office Building are substantially undersized, as we all know. Coast Guard secured this funding, so now is an opportunity to achieve these building improvements for both of us, as well as upgrading the existing North Key Pier restroom and shower facility, which we know is pretty old and antiquated. Option 1 cost, project is about $1.1 million for the city. Again, we get about $300,000 upfront from the Coast Guard, meaning we fund $800,000, likely with loans and combination of loans and grants for a new Harbor Office restroom. Option 2, the new restroom shower cost is about $150,000. Coast Guard, if they move there to condemn that building, they're offering about $60,000, meaning we have to come up with about $100,000 for a new restroom and shower in a location TBD, and we don't replace the Harbor Office at this time and look at doing that at a future time. Pros and cons of each option, these options 1 and Option 2. The pros for Option 1 are the Coast Guard gets a new facility, gets additional space that they need, we get new space that we need. They're not split between two different buildings. That's not good for them from a command and control standpoint. Another pro on that is the city gets a new larger Harbor Office, which is also desperately needed, and we get a new and improved public restroom and shower built at the same location right where it is now. The primary con to this option is the cost, additional cost to the city. Option 2, with the Coast Guard moving over to the current restroom site, it's the cheapest short-term option for the city. The cons are the Coast Guard must find, or Coast Guard's split between two buildings, and we must find a new place for Harbor Office Building sometime in the future, with funds uncertain. So, we're under consideration for tonight. Option 1, considering the ability to take advantage of the Coast Guard's $300,000, we're calling seed money, condemnation money, including the proposed new annual Coast Guard lease payments, we take on $800,000 in additional debt, and end up with a new larger office, upgraded restroom, and expanded Coast Guard facilities together. With Option 2, we spent about $100,000 for a new restroom facility in a place yet to be determined, and still have to replace our Harbor Office in the future, and Coast Guard building is split between two locations. We do have the ability to take advantage of that $60,000 seed money now in that option as well. And Option 3, do nothing and everybody stays put, and the Coast Guard's funding reverts to somewhere else, likely to Congress to spend on who knows what. In conclusion, again, given the Coast Guard's seed money and proposed new lease payments, again, we'd be proposing to negotiate with the Coast Guard for fair market rent for both locations. We now have a unique opportunity for the city to support our, not only our mission needs, but some goals and objectives as well, as well as the mission needs of the Coast Guard, our Coast Guard partner. We'll achieve an important and needed public restroom shower upgrade simultaneously, and due to the Coast Guard's funding deadlines and the permitting timelines for both of us to move these projects forward, time is of the essence. Their money runs out sometime in 2019, and they need to keep moving forward with some progress to keep that money encumbered on their project. So, with all that, staff recommending the city council, direct us to pursue the recommended Option 1. Authorize and direct us to engage an architectural design consultant to begin all the design work for concept and precise plan approvals, including approval of a budget expense amendment of $100,000 from the Harbor Fund, or potential of general fund, if necessary, on a reimbursable basis for design and planning costs. Authorize us to begin concept and precise plan approvals, including combining those two processes where feasible. We're almost there. Continue to authorize and direct us to seek available loan and grant opportunities to fund the city's costs, with the intent that these loans and grants would be not only for future costs, but for any reimbursable past costs as well. And authorize and direct us to continue negotiations with the Coast Guard for these recommended options, including an MOU in terms for a new lease agreement, both to be approved at future council meetings in open session. As a reminder, this is only a first step. Lots of opportunities for the council and public to influence and guide, and if necessary, stop this process, including consideration of any future loan approval of an MOU of the Coast Guard and draft and final lease terms. Assuming all these cogs get put in place and everything works forward, we can keep moving forward. If anything in the meantime trips it up, we can address that as we go. If council approves alternative 1, meaning the Option 2 location, the Coast Guard moving to the restroom site, we ask for council direction, similar council direction, will be necessary for us to pursue the process of funding, relocating, constructing that restroom as well. And with that, city manager has anything to add? I'll leave it at that.
I'll just add the importance of that second main bullet, that this is a first step. There's many opportunities and requirements to come back to you, so what we're asking is to approve Option 1, and to essentially give us the initial latitude to start moving down that road, and to research loans, and to start a design and those things, and then we'll be coming back to you routinely for additional steps in the process for you to approve an MOU, approve a loan, approve a design, all those things.
Okay, thanks. With that, we'll open it for questions. There, I have no speaker slips for public comment questions, so I'll just refer to questions from council to my left. None? Matt?
No, just comments.
Okay, and to my right, questions?
So, that would be a budget exception for this fiscal year, assuming funds might be spent?
Yes, so if you approve this, you are approving an- Yes, so if you approve this, you are approving an exception to the budget. And we'll have to figure out first the cost of the design piece, and then where funds are available, whether they're in the harbor accumulation fund or potentially from the general fund on a reimbursable basis. What I'd really like to do is do, spend as little as possible. I'd like to get loans and grants in place, so we can do most of this through the loan and grant process. But that said, we want to get moving on a timeline here because, as you're aware, time is short to get both the harbor office and the Coast Guard building expansion completed before the Coast Guard's money runs out.
Thanks. No, any questions?
I just want to be clear, so the MOU will be done first? So I get, I'll preface the question in that having the MOU done first will be, you know, will solidify all the terms and conditions of what we're going to do with the Coast Guard prior to investing any funds in architectural, design, and things like that, that if the MOU isn't agreed upon, might not be recoverable. I guess that's what I'm prefacing.
Yes, or very close, and certainly not significant design expenses. So I'm only hedging that, so the next step is to continue the staff to Coast Guard negotiation to ensure that the Coast Guard lease agreement essentially that would be in an MOU is sufficient to warrant moving forward with the project. If, this in my mind is predicated on the Coast Guard, and they've, we'll know more tomorrow morning, but they are, have been initially not negative about, about paying a fair market value lease in order to make this project happen. If they say tomorrow morning, "We ain't doing that," then we might be coming back to you and saying, "You know, we can't afford this, and we need to go with Option Two." But we want to be in position is to move forward with Option One, to be able to demonstrate to them that the city is ready and willing to move forward with Option One, especially should they bring some money to the table with a lease. And if that's, if we get that feeling tomorrow, then we will be full speed ahead on completing an MOU with them that has some of those basic lease terms in it. And while that process is going on now, especially knowing how the federal government works, we may want to start some initial preliminary design work to keep the process rolling.
So what's, what's the urgency to do the design and architectural work? This would be on our end if we don't have the MOU. I mean, I mean, I would imagine if we got the MOU, it kind of defines everything, then we're ready to go. And if we're expending funds and the MOU doesn't go through, we're expending funds and we don't get there. So, you know, those are my concerns. Is there really that much urgency to not complete an MOU, and then we're good to go, and then we'll be able to continue on from there?
I, there may be. I mean, we're, it's a, it's a tight timeline to get this designed, permitted, and constructed even by the middle of '18, especially in a timeline in order to allow, in order to complete the harbor office and have the harbor office move into the new harbor office in time for the Coast Guard to start executing their project. I don't, I don't expect it to be, and I'm just not sure, also, we're not sure how long it will take them to, to finalize an MOU on their end.
I guess that's my concern, too, having experienced this whole project over the, you know, there's been some level of urgency by the Coast Guard, yet it's taken a long time. So I'm hesitant going into design at this point without the MOU because from the experience, at least I've had throughout their conversations with this, we haven't really got all the way there yet. So I'm a little hesitant to, to move forward, start design. We don't have an MOU, and then something changes with the Coast Guard, because that's, that's what we've experienced so far. So I have, I've just got to be right up front on that. And if it means, you know, I'm not sure where it would jeopardize the project if they're the ones that are holding up the MOU, if that's, you know, because it's going to be up to them to kind of set that pace. Those are my thoughts.
Excuse me, Mr. Buckingham. Something to add to this. Based on the, probably the estimated amount of fees for the architectural and permitting work, it's going to require an RFP process to go through. So in all likelihood, we wouldn't have an architect on board for 30 days at least. If we were to give architecture firms a reasonable amount of time to respond to an RFP, prepare, you know, get something out on the street, so it's going to take us a while to even get to design work. So I think we could start the RFP process, get somebody, a contract executed. They probably wouldn't even start work for four to six weeks after we've issued the RFP.
John?
I guess my concern was the, the, the fair market value rent, which would be part of the MOU, I would assume, really determines the cost, final cost of the building. So, Leslie, these numbers are a bit soft, and I'm not sure if you're asking for authority up to a certain amount, or if you're asking for $800,000 or $400,000. I had, had communicated with Eric earlier today, and I still wasn't quite sure with regard to what the bottom line was. So I agree with the need to kind of have the MOU that spells out and lets us know what the rental value might be, and then maybe what the loan value would have to be as a result of that.
I'll just, I'll jump in. We can, in our conference call tomorrow with the Coast Guard, we can convey that urgency on, that we're needing from them, you know, in deference to the mayor's comments about, well, it took them a couple of years to get an MOU to us in the first place, how much longer for this one? You know, it's going to be on them to get that back to us in a timely enough fashion for us to keep making our decisions as well, so we can convey that tomorrow.
You know, I appreciate the work. This has been a long process, and I appreciate the work. I appreciate the Harbor Advisory Board weighing in. I'm in agreement to Option One with my expressed concerns over, you know, establishing an MOU, identifying that, you know, we're good to go. Maybe the RFP can be timed, but I'm just hesitant to get going on expending funds until we have the MOU and, you know, more things are lined out. Those are, that's where I'm at right now.
Perhaps put a caveat on this that says, no significant expenditure of funds before an MOU is complete. I'm just, and that would need to come to you.
Yeah. John, go ahead.
Yeah, no, I was just going to say, I mean, I don't want to look a gift horse in the mouth, in essence, in terms of the funds that are coming from the Coast Guard. And is that the urgency that you're feeling or you're sensing? Because, you know, I'm, gosh, if we can get half of it funded, that's great, but I don't really know what the numbers are. So that MOU, I think flushes that out for me and would help me at least in making a decision with regard to the dollars.
I, and that's why noted there's several times that this is going to come back to the council for your approval. Probably the next thing you're going to see is an MOU. And then the perhaps a loan approval. I guess what I'm after is as much latitude as possible to keep this thing rolling and not need to come back multiple times to council for, can we spend $5,000 on, on some piece of this, and then spend another 10 on another piece of this until we?
You know, I appreciate the concerns. I, you know, I, but, you know, I'm not, I'm not of the mindset that we piecemeal this by any means. But I'm just expressing my concern that, hey, let's get the MOU done and reserve our caution in expending funds until we get that done. And I think that's just based on good experience at this point. And so, you know, that's where I'm at. You know, I'm agreement with Option One. I think the idea of going, getting an MOU first, and then once we get that, then we can go ahead and say, okay, good. You know, we probably will be able to identify in more detail, hey, we've got X amount of funds from the harbor department accumulation fund and X amount of money from our budget, from our general fund, and we can, you know, clearly identify those. I, I just feel, you know, that's, that's where I'm coming from. And I, you know, I haven't heard much, you know, if there's anybody else has some comments. Christine?
I'm wondering if you would look at, if we all could look at page four in the staff report. There are numbers one through five are recommendations to council.
Yep.
Do you want to work through those and figure out which ones you're comfortable with, or we can agree on, like, one looks good? I, too, would am in favor of Option One for, you know, a number of reasons, but you bring up good points. Is there anything there that we can adjust or adapt and give latitude a bit to staff, but yet give, you know, some comfort for council?
So one, four, and five are things I'd hope that we could start working on?
The only one, go ahead.
And some, some level of, I guess I don't know what I don't know, but some level of minor expenditure in order to keep some of this moving along. I mean, honestly, by, I greatly appreciate your responsibility for financial oversight. I share that feeling and that desire, and I think have demonstrated that we're not sort of profligate spenders. And so finding that balance is important, whatever you're comfortable with. This, this was written in a way to, I mean, as I stated before, if the Coast Guard comes back and says, this goes to your point, Mr. Heading, says, you know, we can't, we can't pay any annual lease, then we're going to be right back here to you in two weeks or four weeks saying, Option One, I, at that point, I would come back to you and likely say, we need to go with Option Two, not say, oh, let's run ahead with Option One, and even though it's financially concerning. But with that said, whatever you're comfortable with, we'll, we'll execute.
What I wasn't comfortable with was number two. And that's authorizing an expenditure of up to, or of $100,000 for an undefined project, basically, at this point in time. Honestly, that's just.
Fine.
Yeah, and, I mean, I support Option One as well, but I don't know the numbers. So, and we, it's not budgeted, and we're, we've got a tight budget. So the MOU, I think, would flush it out for me fairly.
So the suggestion was, go through this list. I think there's agreement on Option One. I think, I've heard that from everyone, so we can agree on Option One. Staff recommends, and there's, there's five items listed, for those who are watching, there's five items listed in the, in the recommendation. One, four, and five are the ones that would be necessary to move it forward.
Five being first.
Five, five being first. And, you know, I think there's probably, as far as keeping the project moving, is there enough? I'm, I'm, yes, there is. There's, there's funds in the accumulation fund to keep this moving appropriately. And then when it gets to a point where we need to fund the entire project, you know, we would have those numbers, and we'd be able to go with that. So, you know, I think as though there's enough latitude with, within the harbor accumulation fund to keep it moving without going into.
So since it's not in the budget, actually, I need authority to spend money from the harbor accumulation fund on this since it's not budgeted.
Okay.
I don't know, Rob, what, just going through the RFP process and, and what might be, what might our maximum expenditure requirement be to keep this rolling but short of a design?
Going through the RFP process is going to cost us staff time. So, and probably a little bit of advertising time to get it out on the street. That's really about it. It hits the street. We're going to have to give these architectural firms some time to respond to that RFP. I don't see a contract or a proposal coming back, you know, for probably six weeks unless we press an architectural firm to give us something sooner, which is possible. But six weeks seems like reasonable. Before, we would be signing a contract to authorize the expenditure of $100,000. So I think there's lots we can get done in selection of a firm. In the background, the MOU discussion is happening. Once that happens, then we can issue the contract to a design firm to get us moving forward on the design.
So just one, four, and five are fine?
Okay. One, four, and five. Okay.
Are we in agreement with that up here? And then is that enough for staff? Are you posing that as a question or a confirmation, Mr. Buckingham, that one, four, and five work?
That would be the motion.
That's the motion, if, okay.
What I'm saying is, I sense significant council reticence to approving what staff recommendation is, and I think that the minimum authority I need to move forward is one, four, and five.
I think we're trying to find a compromise position here.
Right.
Okay.
Good with that.
So then the motion would be to recommend city council to approve Option One for the Coast Guard harbor office building locations as outlined, and direct staff to authorize items one, four, and five on page four of the staff report. And I don't need to read all those for the, for the motion, but that would be the motion.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second by Mr. Heading. Any further discussion to my left? None?
Yeah, briefly, I would just say that this is a far cry improvement along the project we saw several years ago, proposed by the Coast Guard. And I think, I do appreciate the opportunity to work directly with the Coast Guard and the city together to make a better project for this community overall. And also, it'll improve facilities for safety and security in in innumerable ways, but it's, working together with the Coast Guard, as difficult as it may be, is producing a much better project, just in general, from what we saw two years ago, including a new facility for restroom and shower, which we've been hearing a lot about recently. So I don't want to let it go without commenting.
Thank you.
Working together has been much better for the city of Moray Bay.
Thanks for that, Christine. I'll just add, you know, to Mr. Buckingham's credit and, and work and with the Coast Guard as well, you know, getting us here. So, you know, I appreciate that as well. So we do have a motion. All in favor say aye. Aye? Opposed? None? Motion carries. All right, that concludes that. And we have one item on the agenda. Item C4 is the adoption of ordinance number 603, amending chapter 13.2 of the Moray Bay Municipal Code regarding building limitations and resolution number 4816 allocating water equivalency units for the fiscal year 1617.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Last council meeting, ordinance number 603 was introduced, and it changed the reporting dates for the annual water report. And it changed the reporting dates for the annual water report. This would be the second reading of that ordinance. Along with that, we are requesting that the council approve resolution 48-16 that sets the WUs for this next fiscal year identified in that ordinance. Just want to point out that resolution does carry forward our WEU offset program where new development would have to, still because of our critical water supply situation, still need to offset the water supply proposed with new development, either through the payment of inlet fees, should reverse that, either through the construction of offsetting BMPs or if that's not feasible, the payment of inlet fees. That concludes my staff report.
Great. Any questions to my left, to my right? Seeing none, we have no speaker slips or public comment at this time. With that, we'll do staff recommendation and by adopting the following, that would be, the first one would be ordinance number 603, an ordinance of the city council of the City of Moore Bay, California, amending the Moore Bay Municipal Code by modifying chapter 13.2, building limitation and way further reading. And resolution 4816, setting the water equivalency unit WEU allocation for fiscal year 201617. That's the motion. Yes, that is the motion. So we have a motion and a second by council member Heading. Further discussion? None? All in favor say aye. Aye? Opposed? None? Motion carries. And that concludes our agenda right on time. So any council, any council declaration items? Any future agenda items? Seeing none. Our next regular council meeting will be held on Tuesday, June 28, 2016, at 6:00 PM, located right here at the Veterans Memorial Hall, located at 209 Sur Street. Thank you very much. Good night. Meeting adjourned.